Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council for the night of May 5th. Would you please stand and join me in pledging allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call to roll.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Pena is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Glancy?
Here. Let's see. A request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Item 5D, presentation from Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance is being rescheduled to a future date. So, this is the time for special presentations. I'll step down to the podium. Give me a moment if you would, and I shall address accordingly. Mark has joined me. Tonight, we're proclaiming May 19th to 21st as National Public Works Week, and I encourage all of you -- I think we have an infestation. I encourage all of you to go out to the service yard for a tour during May 19th to 21st. It's tremendously interesting. Children particularly enjoy it, as do the adults. They do an exceptional job managing the infrastructure in the city, critical to the well-being and safety of our residents. I don't feel good with you guys behind me. Everyday residents use public works facilities, the services of public works, the streets, the wastewater transportation, so with that. Mark, tell us something about the week.
Thank you, Mayor Glancy. City Council, members of the public, this is my network. This week, Public Works Week is May 17th through the 23rd. This week is designed to celebrate and honor the public works profession. Public works is the foundation of a city, providing the basic infrastructure needs that makes all of our lifestyles possible. In Thousand Oaks, your Public Works Department maintains over 380 miles of streets, 750 miles of sidewalks. We serve water through 200 miles of water mains utilizing 16 reservoirs, turning 7,000 valves, and maintaining 2,000 fire hydrants. We collect wastewater through 500 miles of pipelines using 8,000 manholes, and that goes downhill to the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant where we treat 11 million gallons of wastewater per day and discharge at meeting drinking water standards. We also maintain 25,000 street trees, 400 acres of landscaped areas. We sweep the streets, we remove the graffiti. We oversee trash collection, recycling programs, community enhancement grants, and a multitude of other tasks. Our services are provided 24/7/365. Every one of these programs is implemented in an environmentally responsible manner. We use recycled tires when we pave, we use alternative fuels in our vehicles, we use beneficial insteks for pest control. We have implemented numerous energy reduction programs, as well as generating our own green power at Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. The largest electricity user in the city is completely off of the grid during the peak of the day. These programs have also garnered numerous awards and recognition from the United States EPA, the American Public Works Association, the State of California, the Integrated Waste Management Board, and many, many others. So, speaking for all the men and women of the Public Works Department, we want to thank you for recognizing Public Works Week and for inviting us to join you here this evening to celebrate the week. We invite all of you to join us during the week of May 17th. Come out to the Service Center. We've got an open house for schoolchildren. Council's invited, the public's invited. We'd be happy to see you all there. So, Mayor Glancy, thanks.
And Mark, thank you very much for the services that you all provide and the quality of service and attention that your crew do. It's a great job. It's a pleasure for me to present you with this proclamation. Well-earned, has absolutely no cash value though. But I do want to compliment you on the decoration. The decor is absolutely gorgeous tonight.
This is the way we like it.
Thanks a lot. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you very, very much.
Love you.
Mark, you've got some more stuff here.
Oh, here's it right there. There we go.
Perhaps it would be more appropriate to take this off. For our second presentation, I'd like to ask Rick Schroeder down. Here he is. Since 1979, Many Mansions has provided well-managed service and rich, affordable housing to our low-income residents of Ventura County. They own and manage 400 units with approximately 1,000 adults and 200 children. This year, they're celebrating their 30th anniversary. So, Rick, would you please tell us about Many Mansions and who you have with?
I certainly will. Mayor Glancy, members of the City Council, members of City staff. I'm Rick Schroeder. I'm the president of Many Mansions. And with me tonight is Kevin Kozel, our Board of Directors Chairperson, and Chris Salto, our Board of Directors Vice Chair. As Many Mansions celebrates its 30-year anniversary, we want to recognize our important partners, partners who've made a difference in the cause of affordable housing. And there has been no more important partner than the City of Thousand Oaks, its City Council, its City staff, and indeed, the residents of Thousand Oaks. You were with us at the beginning. From the very first meeting 30 years ago in March of 1979, when Frank Schillo called to his office about 25 community members to discuss what could be done to develop more affordable housing in the city, you were there. From our very first initial joint partnership with the city for Schillo Gardens in the mid- 1980s, to the city's acquisition of Shadow Hills, to all our subsequent affordable housing projects, including our most recent land acquisition on Hillcrest, you were there. From support of our residential service programs, including our after-school tutoring program, summer camp program, programs for disabled and homeless residents, you were there. From our fundraisers such as the duck race, our Bowls of Hope, and the upcoming gala, you were there. Indeed, the City Council, the City staff, and the residents of Thousand Oaks has always been there, been there for Many Mansions, and has always been there for Thousand Oaks' residents most in need. So, tonight, we'd like to give you a small token of our appreciation. It's not going to be a duck or a bowl. We have a plaque of appreciation, and Kevin Kozel, our Board Chairman, is going to read it.
Mayor Glancy, members of the City Council, I'd like to present this plaque to you and read it very briefly. In recognition of the 30th anniversary of Many Mansions and with grateful appreciation to the City of Thousand Oaks for your continued support, as together we provide hope and homes to those in need in Ventura County. Thank you for your commitment to the mission and vision of Many Mansions founders. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. Let's get a photo, guys. Come on in. Thanks.
Thank you.
And thank you for the great job you do for our people in the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final presentation, I would like to invite CRPD Chair Susan Holt and Aquatics Director Dee Pearson to join me. CRPD was recently awarded, really kind of a crate award for the one-up pool.
No value at all.
No cash value at all. CRPD plays an important role in our community by managing our park system and it services the key players in providing the high quality of life that our residents enjoy. And I'm delighted to say that we've been working with CRPD and have been strong community partners for a long time. We work together on Canoe Open Space Conservation Agency, senior retained centers, and of course, the community pool at CLU. Now, Susan's going to tell us about the award for the pool.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Glancy, and councilpeople. Yes, we were given an award from the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts. It's an award of distinction. We get to keep it, though. And it was for the best new facility for a large district, and it's because of the community pool. Now, it's not just because it's a lovely pool, which it is. It's a beautiful pool, a beautiful facility, but it's really because of the innovative and collaborative efforts that the city and the Cal Lutheran and the Wren Park District have put together for this, as well as many other projects. So, you are a partner in this, and we thank you very much. We're very appreciative. Now, I'd like to introduce Dee Pearson, who is the Aquatics Program Director.
Hi. Had I known a little bit earlier, I would have bought my team of lifeguards behind me. I bought a few, so that's good. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody, the council, and all their support throughout this project. It's been huge. Our community pool has started off so successful. We're running swimming lessons, lap swimming, rec swim, a lot of specialized programs, lifeguard training, water safety instruction, junior guards, and we are, I want to say we're almost at capacity at most of them. And it's time to build a new one. Well, we'll wait a while for that, I guess. We do have our grand opening on May 9th, and it's from 3 to 6. And we encourage the community and everybody to come. We'll have hot dogs and drinks, and it'll just be a fun time, games running throughout the day, a great family event. And thank you so much for everything during this time. Thank you.
Hold the flag up. Pretend like you're going to give it to us.
No.
Dee and Susan, thank you so much. The clerk announced public comments, please.
A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called unheard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on the subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Five people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker will be Barry Fisher, followed by Jeff Matson, followed by Barbara Workantin. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and your place of residence, please, Barry.
Mayor Glancy, members of the council, Barry Fisher, resident of Thousand Oaks and also the director of your county Public Health Department. Came here tonight at the request of Scott Mitnick, and thank you, Scott, for getting me out of work early. It's been a long nine days here. Wanted to update you on what's going on locally, as well as the state and across the country. As of 3 o'clock today, there's about 403 confirmed cases of swine flu in the U.S., but if all the probable cases were actually counted in this number, it's closer to 1,000. There are 99 confirmed cases in California, but counting all probable cases, there's likely approximately 219. Ventura County now has seven cases. Two cases were added today, 25-year-old from Oxnard and a 13-year-old from the city of Thousand Oaks. As of today, all three schools in, three schools in the county have been closed, Newbury Park High School and two schools in Oxnard. They were closed at the time because of recommendations both from the CDC and the State Department of Public Health. Over the last nine days, has allowed the CDC to reevaluate how they deal with issues like this, being able to monitor how the flu is being transmitted. And what we're seeing here in California is a much milder case of the flu, which is good, but certainly, we can't put our guards down. While the illness is mild, I'd just like to go back a little bit in time of 1918 when the Spanish flu came. It was also mild, but it came back in the fall and killed hundreds and thousands of Americans. What the virus has in common, the current virus of that of 1918, is they're both novel viruses. We aren't familiar with this particular virus, although they're running tests on it now. They are new to man, and so therefore, there's no immunity to them right now, which is the problem. The CDC is working to hopefully include this new strain of flu in their vaccinations for next year. So, with that, I'd like to open up to any questions that you may have of me.
Questions? Mr. Fox?
Thanks for coming, Mr. Fisher. I guess my question is, is that by all accounts, it's a very minor flu, and it's been related to me that it would not be uncommon for a coworker to come to work under the weather and probably have a much more severe flu than the swine flu. What is the rationale, in particular with the schools, in closing schools for, you know, days or weeks at a time when the appears that the medical threat is relatively low?
Well, the, excuse me, the thought at the time is, anytime you have a congregation, such as here in the City Council, or closer, you know, especially school-age kids, you know, they're a couple feet from each other, so you have a better chance of passing this virus around. What we see locally here in the county, as well as other parts of the country, is that, okay, well, you close a school down now, well, what do the kids do? Well, now they start to congregate. Here locally, they started congregating at some of the public libraries. So, it essentially defeated the purpose of what it was initially meant to take place. So, we've had conference calls with the State Department of Public Health on a daily basis. Other counties have expressed the same concerns that we had, that we don't think we're getting our bang for the buck by shutting down schools because they're going to congregate anyway. So, the message that we want to get out there is, if you're sick, stay home, whether it's schoolkids, workers, feel like you have the flu, stay home. Call your private doctor. You know, don't feel that you have to come in at work because there's going to be a good chance that that's going to be spread. So, this morning, the CDC came out with their new recommendations that backed off of automatically shutting down schools for the first probable case that came up. So, it's nice to see that they listened to the localities and changed their focus a little bit to be more realistic.
The other thing that may be of interest to the general public is, we've had some confirmed cases apparently here in Ventura County, and it's had some period of time, recognizing it's a relatively low-level flu. How are the folks doing who have been contacted with the flu? Are they better? We keeping track of those folks?
Yes. The seven people that have contracted the actual swine flu are doing much better. Some of the first initial cases that we investigated last week, we were able to start them on Tamiflu. We received a stockpile from the State of California of antivirals, so we've got that at a secure location. We were able to send out our public health nurses and do an assessment, and if warranted, start them on the Tamiflu quickly. So, those two initial patients are doing well, and the five that followed are doing well.
And as far as the impact on Los Robles, I happened to be there related to the fire department over the weekend. It seemed like a lot of folks were in there with masks. I don't know if that was just a precautionary measure, or have we got some information back from Los Robles that they've seen an increase in visits to the emergency room because of this?
Countywide, including Los Robles, has definitely seen an increase in flu-like symptoms. We've been encouraging the general public that, you know, please don't flood the emergency departments.
Right.
Please contact your private physician. We've got county clinics all over the place, as well as there's urgent cares and other avenues you can get treatment. What we do is, we have a blast fax in the Public Health Department where we communicate with all the physicians in the county. We have a thing called Hot Tips, and it's recommended, you know, what they do. Do you swab a patient? Do you check for the virus? Do you not? Do you start them on antiviral medications or not? So, we're in pretty close contact with physicians, but yes, the emergency departments are seeing a spike in people with flu-like symptoms.
And again, your message is, don't go to the emergency room because you're just overloading it.
Do not go to the emergency room. That's for serious patients, and your private physician can certainly guide you. You know, if he feels you need to go to the emergency room, you need to be guided by that, not making...
Now, what about the 911 system as well? Has there been folks accessing that? And what would be your message for the use of the 911 system as it relates to the flu?
Luckily, we have not seen an increase in 911 calls due to flu symptoms. We have a new product that actually sits in our office that we have gauges, so based on what's going out with the Fire Department dispatch, we see gauges on whether or not there's a spike in calls for flu-like symptoms, and we just haven't seen that, which is great.
Very good. Thanks again for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, just shortly after 5 o'clock, I was watching ABC Channel 7 in Los Angeles, and they had an advisory from the Center for Disease Control revising the school closing thing and directing that the schools that had been closed should now, they should reconvene. They also announced there'd been a fatality in Texas, but it was, who had the virus, but it was also had other pretty significant health issues, so it couldn't be attributed solely to that. So, it looks like the whole thing is kind of changing around. But the school issue, which because of the related consequences of putting all those young people out and the seriousness now of the virus and what have you, has changed significantly from when it first started.
Yes, that's correct. The two deaths in the United States both had underlying causes, although they did have the swine flu.
Any other questions? None? Thank you very much for being here and give us an update on that.
You're welcome.
I know you've been busy. Maybe you can get some rest now.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief, you're up, followed by Barbara Workantin, and Bob Carson after that.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and members of the City Council. On a lighter note, I'm here to say that Thousand Oaks Police Department is now on Twitter. Twitter is an online networking site. To put it in the simplest terms, it is a blackboard that can be written on about anything and have people view it. Those who are members of Twitter can follow as many people in industries as they wish, and when they, and when those they are following post a new message, it will appear on their homepage. It's a quick and easy way to stay connected with anyone. The demographics for Twitter are mainly our younger population, who has fully embraced social networking sites like MySpace, Facebook, and of course, now Twitter. The main reason for using Twitter is gives Thousand Oaks Police Department another way to communicate with the different segment of our community. Recently, we have posted on Twitter at the police department site, was the missing at-risk elderly gentleman, and we had four responses from the community identifying him and his location. We have posted bicycle safety information, and we plan to post Citizen Academies, Parent Projects, StartSmart classes for our new drivers, and a lot of other pertinent information. To find us, you go to twitter.com, then you just search for Thousand Oaks Police Department, and you can check it out. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief, for being with us tonight. Barbara, followed by Bob Carson, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Hello. Barbara Workantin, Thousand Oaks. Thank you to the city for providing such an excellent Public Works Department. I especially appreciate their prompt service when I've called for tree trimming. My family has used the toxic waste disposal service many times, and the department's efficiency is impressive. I'm glad you denied the Home Depot on Hampshire, chiefly because of my personal fear of being hit by an impatient truck driver exiting the freeway behind me on the off-ramp. I wish you success in the development of this property. But enough of the sweet words. I'm angry that you have chosen to spend $96,500 for consultants to solve Mr. Caruso's business problems. It's bad enough that earlier councils virtually gave him that valuable land. Our money would have been better spent by the library to enhance our educational and recreational resources. And by the way, any thrifty consumer could tell you why the lakes is not very profitable. Soon, with your approval, greedy developers will begin high-density, high-rise construction on Thousand Oaks Boulevard from Moore Park to Duesenberg. There's already way too much traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. High-density, high-rise will make it worse, but who really cares about the peasants in Thousand Oaks? In case you hadn't read, there's a severe water shortage in California. Do we really need to put a greater strain on this limited resource? But a developer can't be denied, so you'll just ration the peasants' water use and raise their, and raise their rates besides. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us. Bob Carson, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening. I'm Bob Carson. I'm resident of Santa Paula. I'm joined up here by, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good evening, Danny Correio. I'm with SEIU 721 on behalf of TOSIA.
And Jay Spurgeon, Newbury Park. I'm the SMA Senior Manager Association President.
Mayor, councilmembers, residents, fellow employees. I'm Bob Carson, Public Works employee, president of Thousand Oaks Management Association. I've been fortunate enough to enjoy the trust of my fellow employees to fill this position for the last 12 years. I've been asked, requested to share some thoughts with you on behalf of Toma's Board of Directors, as well as the Thousand Oaks City Employees Association, TOSIA, and the Senior Managers Association, SMA. Considerable amount of your attention tonight will be focused on the city's budget proposal over the next two years and the uncertainty over projecting revenues and expenditures. Speaking on behalf of the city's employees, management staff are not adversaries. We are all united in all these common goals. At times during previous administrations, such a statement might not have been accurately reflected, the tenor of the city's employee-employer relations. However, over the past five years, we've saw both sides have worked very hard at building a more concrete, more resolute foundation of trust and respect. We believe all have benefited from these improved relations. As a result, we are united with you in these efforts to affect both the balanced budget and to achieve the larger mission of the city. Winston City staff has worked incredibly hard to share the extra workload incurred by the ongoing hiring freeze and subsequent vacancies in more than 34 positions. We anticipate this to continue with at least 17 more vacancies incurred before the end of the calendar year. Employees have also enumerated scores of budget-saving strategies which have been incorporated into the budget which will be before you tonight, with an estimated savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars. We also expect to continue in that effort. We recognize that any decision regarding a projected use of revenues is not taken lightly. However, we also believe ample reserves are intended as our municipal rainy day However, we also believe ample reserves are intended as our municipal rainy day fund, and this is the first uniquely qualifying storm event since the city's incorporation. Thank you for your attention and your efforts.
Thank you very much. Debbie Gregory, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Danny Correio.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Gregory. I'm a proud resident of Thousand Oaks, and I want to talk about fiscal concerns, too. Can you hear me?
Sure.
I want to address some of the fiscal concerns. Like the second previous speaker, I have concerns about decisions of the council. We can only spend money once. We're in the largest global recession in the history of our nation. People are losing their homes, their jobs. It's a sad time, and this city needs to spend money wisely. And I have a problem when we have a billionaire bailout, when we give a billionaire, Caruso affiliated, almost $100,000 of money that can help small businesses, nonprofits, and people in this community. And the money is to hire an out-of-town consultant, not even to use local talent. You tell us to buy locally, but you didn't even put a provision in there to use some local talent to find out why the lakes, which is a very nice development, doesn't make money. You don't have to be a rocket scientist. Who's going to spend $150 on a t-shirt any time, let alone now? It just is not a good way to use money. And we've already given Caruso affiliated $12 million in property improvements. Where does it stop? Now, I went to, I took the trouble to research and go to Caruso's website, and I want to share with you what I found there. According to Caruso's website, quote, "During the past 20 years, the compounded annual growth rate of our revenues is over 20 percent. Caruso affiliated is a privately-held company with no outside partners or investors." You know how many people would love to have 10%, let alone 20%? It's the wrong decision, as it was the wrong decision to want to hire an out-of-town branding company. An icon in Thousand Oaks, Frank Charbriler, went out of business after 50 years. Maybe some of the small businesses could use your help instead of these developers, and maybe you need to rethink how you're spending money. Tonight, you have an item, it's sort of hidden away, it was hard to find, $5 million to Parks and Rec to build a park, the first phase of a $20 million park. Please, look at our demographics. The schools are closing because there aren't enough students. So why are we building parks that the people in that community don't want and spending money? You can only spend it once. You really need to be in tune with the people that you serve. Four members of this council do, and please rethink the way that you're spending it. And please, don't blame it on Ed Masary, who's not here to defend himself, who died, why the lakes isn't as profitable. That's really, really a low blow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Nick Kidway, followed by Danny Correio.
I begin in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway. Dr. Glancy, last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, dwindling group. I begin in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful. I'm a little concerned, I forgot that so much pork is dispensed in this chamber, and the millions for Caruso was mentioned, that probably means that there's a much higher proportion and a good chance of contracting swine flu here. So maybe I will go home unless I get some overtime pay from concerned citizens. Well, I'm here before a serious deliberative body, great smile on the mayor's face. Look at all the wonderful props for public works. I mean, it really reminds you that this is really a theater, and this is all theatrics, and the mayor just put on the hard hat. No, I'm a nice guy. Well, if this really is a public forum, why is it that, I mean, when you have a wonderful seven-hour hearing on this Home Depot fiasco, that you only give two minutes to citizens? Your own standards of operation allow citizens to speak for longer time, and you got advice from the city attorney which was wrong, and in fact, the process was not explained to myself and other people. And in fact, I hope Home Depot, who has the deep pockets, sues the hell out of this agency, and, because they were not really given the due process. Like, one of the things I wanted to point out is a council member was on record opposing the Measure B, et cetera, and did not recuse herself. Good deliberative bodies do not have staff sitting on the dais. I've said this for a long time, and a lot of people realize that faces change, but this council remains to be looked down upon and a laughingstock. And that's the reason, because even good people come up, and sitting on the dais, they just turn into, what is it? I don't know. Well, I'd like to read a timeline. In 1991, I came before this body, different faces, and the city council proposed a $55 non-resident fee. For God's sakes, what is a non-resident? Somebody from the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks, Lynn Ranch, Moore Park. 98 or so, the city named its library after the city manager emeritus, Grant Brimhall, because his mother was librarian. And Mr. Brimhall is the one that pushed this $55 non-resident fee. And lo and behold, now in 2009, Mr. Brimhall will probably have to pay $70 as a non-resident because he lived in Lynn Ranch. Those people who live in the unincorporated areas should really come and voice their opinion, because this is just a travesty of justice. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Danny Correio.
Good evening again. My name is Dana Correio. I'm the worksite organizer for SEIU 721 and TOSIA. I wanted to take this opportunity to formally introduce myself to some of you that I haven't had a chance to meet, and I have been working with many of your city staff, so hello. Again, on behalf of TOSIA SEIU 721, I'd like to go on record that TOSIA SEIU 721 look forward in continuing to work collaboratively with all city staff in addressing any budget shortfalls that will continue to provide quality city services that the residents here so rightly deserve. TOSIA SEIU 721 feel any budget shortfalls can be closed without having to reduce any city staff or their pay. These items only harm the morale of your staff, not to mention all the other costs that are incurred when you, when your experienced staff decide to leave. Again, TOSIA SEIU 721 and all other bargaining units in the city wish to continue to work in a positive, good-faith manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Correio. Okay. Ms. Albano, you have a comment?
Thank you. I just normally don't respond at all, but I think it's really important that the record straight, that all due process, that everyone was entitled to during the Home Depot project and that hearing, which we know was a very lengthy marathon hearing, was provided, the applicant was provided, the appellants were provided due process. None of the council members had any type of bias that they needed to excuse or recuse themselves, that was not raised by any applicant or appellant, and I just wanted to set this record straight and defend the actions of the city council that evening as being totally legal and totally appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two items. Comments were made about the council's previous decision to hire a consultant to help do the analysis of various properties in the downtown area. Just to remind the council and the public, this is not a study just for the lakes parcel. It's a study for a variety of parcels in the downtown area, and it's primarily the result of the fact that we have a very lean redevelopment agency staff. We don't have in-house expertise in taking a look at the type of economic analysis that needs to be done, and we did explain that in detail. And also, I want to stress, it's not to assist the business that's there, Caruso affiliated's property. In fact, the lakes is profitable, that's not the issue. So there were some interesting statements made that are not quite in line with what's happening out there, but it's a much larger picture. And then also, we heard some comments, and we're going to get into this later, on the budget with the library. The non-resident fee, just for clarification purposes, is $70, and it does not apply to the unincorporated areas such as Lynn Ranch. We heard that reference. There are no fees charged to those folks. There is an agreement, a 20-year longstanding agreement between the county and the city to cover the unincorporated area residents. The non-resident fee applies to those from outside the Canal Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 7, redevelopment agency consent calendar. Comments? Mr. Chillette. Move consent? We have speaker cards on this. So after comment, anything to pull? No? Nothing to pull, so let's hear from Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, must be doing something right to get the wrath of staff over here, and no chance for rebuttal. I would just like to speak on your minutes, number A. And I did print the minutes from February 24. Since you do not provide, like any decent agency, and this agency used to do it, the planning commission did extra written copies, it's not easily available. And I'd just like to read the public comments of February 24. Frank Schillo, Thousand Oaks, Francisco Bear, Thousand Oaks, Joseph Pagano, Thousand Oaks, Arena, Thousand Oaks. This is not due process for anyone appearing before this body. What the hell did these people speak? I mean, this is the basic essence of American democracy, is agendas which you are providing and is written well. In fact, correction. The reason I speak on the consent calendar is because according to your rules and everybody's rules, non-deliberative, simple issues that do not require any discussion should be put over here. But staff constantly put stuff over here to hide it from the citizens, et cetera. Like, I mean, the reason the lakes consultant thing became big was because it was on a report. And here, number E, old town improvements, you are spending $140,000 on this staff report. I was on a citizens' roundtable, and we discussed this. Why the hell do we have, I mean, these are the people who are sucking the blood of American taxpayers, these consultants. When are you going to stop this, Mayor? When are you going to look out for the interests of the taxpayers and not these fat cats who are getting rich, publishing these things which nobody reads? And which you do not want to read, because you do not provide the information in time. I mean, it's been 20 years, Mr. Fox is laughing. I mean, you provided the agenda packet two weeks ahead physically. Now, you provide it at noon on Friday, so that people do not have a chance to read it or comment on it. And then, you know, you're dissolving the joint powers of CSAP. I mean, I was on it for 10 years, because this is a non-sexy agency of citizens. How about at least recognizing some of the people that contributed for it for 20 years? Even the staff people, like Caroline Milton and the gal from the Park District, who spent, went beyond the call of duty and arranged the parenting fair and the red ribbons. This should be acknowledged, not just people who make the council look good directly or indirectly, I guess. And then, people should look at the funding of the Wendy Road improvement. I mean, there are so many funds. I mean, I don't have time anymore, because you should really give five minutes to these things, like, because nobody wants to participate anywhere. So anyone that comes and wants to speak to the agenda topic, give them five minutes, Mr. Fox, like the good old days, when you came over, rather than the three minutes. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Chillette. Move consent? Comments? None, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Let's go to hearing 8A. Madam Court.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, an adjustment to the inclusionary housing in lieu and non-residential linkage fees until June 30, 2010. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you. Mr. Hatch, are you doing the presentation?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight to discuss possible adjustment of the Affordable Housing Program fees. As indicated, that includes the inclusionary in lieu fee and the non-residential development linkage fee. Just by way of background, and I won't go all the way back, these programs had their origin in two previous iterations of the housing element, and most recently, your council workshop on affordable housing in March 2006, she directed staff to go forward and explore developing these programs. Between May and November of 2007, we contracted with a firm, Bay Area Economics, to do a fairly detailed analysis and come up with program recommendations, as well as a fee structure for these fees. And then, in November of 2007, we came before the council, we presented those findings, we received direction to go forward and develop an ordinance, which we did, that was introduced to council in July of 2008, along with recommended fees, and then that was adopted in September 2008 and took effect formally on October 10, 2008. And just to remind folks of what the purpose of the adopted program is, it was seen as a way to supplement and eventually replace redevelopment housing set-aside funds, which is the primary source of affordable housing funds within the city right now, because the project areas will, in near future, probably within 20 years, expire. It's also intended to satisfy an ongoing need for affordable housing, as well as to meet our needs in meeting our regional housing needs assessment goals. I just wanted to talk very briefly about the methodology that went into devising these fees and what those fee amounts wound up. The first is the in lieu fee, which applies to residential development, and we used a two-step process to establish that fee. And basically, the first part of that process was to actually establish the true cost to produce affordable housing, and that created a gap between market-rate housing and the cost to produce affordable housing. Those fees were relatively high, so the next step that we did, we employed a feasibility analysis, and this was the crucial aspect and sort of the premise we came before you with in adopting these programs and fees, and that was demonstrating that a project could remain feasible while supporting the fees that were assessed against them. And as adopted those fees, we had a two-tiered structure. For single-family dwellings, it was $9,000 per dwelling unit, and for detached, or I'm sorry, for attached townhouses and condominiums, it was $25,000 per dwelling unit. And then, with regard to the non-residential linkage fee, it was a similar process. The first step was, we did an X-ass analysis that generated the true cost to meet affordable housing need by various industry types. And then again, the second portion of that process was a feasibility analysis, where we set a return on cost and saw what fees were supportable by various development types. So what we wound up with in that category was basically five categories. Commercial retail, $4.50 a square foot. Two categories, office and lodging, at $2.50 a square foot. And then two categories, industrial and research and development, were assessed zero-dollar fees, and that was because they weren't feasible at the time we conducted the study. And then, another category, there are certain uses that were not able to be categorized, so they were defined as other, and those are then classified based on information they provide to the Community Development Department by the director. And we've had a couple of examples of that, the first of which was Belmont Assisted Living, which was classified as an other use and wound up being classified as lodging based on employment demand and salary characteristics. And another example of that more recently is Cal Lutheran's request for a new building at their site, and that was recently classified by the director as industrial. So just a brief discussion about where we are with regard to residential market conditions and commercial market conditions. At the peak of the market, the median sales price here in Thousand Oaks was $729,000. The median sales price in March was $423,000, so that constitutes a decrease of 42%, and that's down about 36% from the time that we conducted our feasibility analysis in November of 2007. we conducted our feasibility analysis in November of 2007. Sales activity has begun to increase recently, which is a good sign. However, we still have price declines, but I guess as an example of how bad things are, we're celebrating the fact that the rate of decline is much less than it was. The last couple of months have been virtually flat. Inventories remain at historically high levels. Foreclosure activity is still increasing. Some banks have been holding activity in abeyance, but that has stopped, and so we're likely to see another surge in foreclosure activity. Credit availability is pretty tight, and general economic conditions are not so good. Employment is, unemployment is still increasing, and consumer confidence is weak. So all of these factors kind of play into where the residential market is ultimately going and when we might see a bottom. The nonresidential market conditions, lease rates have declined. Recent information we obtained from a local brokerage firm, office rates here in Thousand Oaks are at about $2.05 a square foot, and that represents about 18% decline from where we were when we presented our feasibility analysis to you. Retail, commercial is at about $2.21 a square foot, and that's about 37% below where we were when we presented to you. And just to point out, when we're talking about lease rates in office and commercial areas, it's not always apples to apples because there's a lot of permutations, Class A, Class B, Class C, triple net, single net. So it's not quite as straightforward as when we're talking, when we're comparing sales prices with regard to the residential market. Vacancy rates are high, and they're continuing to increase. By way of example, right now, the office vacancy rate here in Thousand Oaks is about 16%. 10% to 12% is considered a healthy market. Retail is at 66% to 7%. And at the height of the market, we were looking at vacancy rates of about 1% to 2%. So that shows you how that's increased. Business closures have had an effect on that, obviously, countrywide absorption into Bank of America. It also, business formation has obviously slowed, and that's tied to credit conditions which are extremely tight for private sector. And then, again, as with residential, the general economic conditions play into this. The commercial market is very closely tied to employment, and it's kind of seen as a lagging indicator, whereas residential market tends to be a leading indicator. And it's also very closely tied to consumer spending, which plays into confidence. So, a lot of data, and what's that really tell us? Well, in February, UCSB Economic Forecast, which is a pretty well-known group locally here, predicted that we wouldn't come out of recovery until mid-2010. Recently nationally here, you heard discussion that we may actually begin to come out of recession in late 2009 and return to growth at the end of the year. Now whether that's true, that's hard to say. So I guess the bottom line that we're presenting to you tonight is, we really don't know. And so, given the fact that we really don't know, what's a reasonable tact to take with these fees? Because again, the premise behind the fee structure that we devised was feasibility. So there were three ways that we could look at adjusting these fees. We could say, let's replicate the previous process. We could reconvene focus groups, reconstruct pro formas, and come up with another good snapshot. Well, that probably wouldn't do us any good, given that we still have a moving target. The other method that we looked at doing was a prorata adjustment based on the rate of change from when we came before you with the fees initially and where we are with the market. And we were actually intending to come before you in January with something like that. However, it was clear at that time that the market was still declining. And that doesn't seem to be a very good method unless we know that we are at or close to a bottom and can kind of chart where we think we're going. And at this point, that still isn't really clear. So, the third option that we felt we had available to us was, come before you and basically recommend an abeyance of these fees. And so, what we're coming before you with is a recommendation that we set the fees to zero for a temporary period of time, which would be through the end of next fiscal year, or June 30, 2010. And those fees would apply both to detached and attached product in the inclusionary program, and they would apply to all categories within the nonresidential linkage fee program. And then, tied closely to that is, we would also recommend that we come back before you, before the end of next fiscal year, report on market conditions, and come up with a new recommendation on how we should handle the fee adjustment at that time, because hopefully, where we are in terms of trend will be much clearer. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Questions? Mr. Chillette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand correctly, then there are six primary categories?
There are five. But there's a, there's a, what we did is, when we had, we devised those five categories, we went through the zoning ordinance and all of our specific plans, and we looked at all of the defined uses in those documents. And then, we categorized those within the five categories that we had established in the nonresidential linkage fee program. There are certain use types within our zoning ordinance that were unique, we'll say, and didn't lend themselves to readily being characterized in one of those land use categories. So what we did was, the ordinance has a provision that we class those uses as other, and then they need to submit to us employee density information and salary information, and then the Community Development Director takes that information and assesses where he believes, which category he believes they most closely align with.
Well, as I try to understand this, I'm looking at detached, single-family dwellings, one, townhomes condominiums, two, commercial retail, three, office and lodging, four, industrial, five, and research and development, six.
Well, there's actually, there are two programs. So when we talk about the inclusionary housing, there's those two categories of attached and detached dwelling units. And then, when we talk about the nonresidential development linkage fee categories, there's five. One of them is combined on the slide, so that may be a little confusing. We have commercial retail, then we have office, and lodging is actually defined as a separate category. We just put those two together because they have the same fee. And then, we have industrial and then research and development. So those are the five categories under nonresidential.
Well, okay. I'm going to be, there is no category in here for nonprofit, then?
No.
Nonprofit institutions?
No.
Okay. And I guess the question is, what would be the process for a member of the City Council to bring forward a revision or a new ordinance to give the council an opportunity to determine whether or not they wanted a classification of nonprofit?
I'll defer that to the Community Development Director.
Or the city attorney. Okay, basically, the specific categories were set up by the original ordinance. They're part of the municipal code. And the process to add a different, add another category with its own classification would require an amendment to the code. That could be initiated by the City Council and then referred to the Planning Commission and then back to council for final action. That's the process.
Okay, so, would it be appropriate at the conclusion of this one, what is the requested action? I'm sorry, the city attorney is obviously anxious to comment on this.
Well...
When you rise up like that, I assume you're ready.
Yes, you're right. I am. If you want to do that, we have to agendize it and bring it back to initiate a change of the ordinance. We can't, you can't act on initiating a change of the ordinance tonight.
Well, Mrs. Albana, that's what I'm trying to find out, what the process is.
Right. Wanted to add on to what Mr. Prescott said. He's right, we have to initiate. But if the council's interested in that, then we need to bring that back, agendize it for the council to give us direction to go ahead and initiate the...
All right. And what is the process for indicating the interest to do that?
We can agendize it since you're indicating it to us tonight for the next council meeting, if that's what you want. Or you can fill out one of those forms that we have, you know, doing a memo to the council asking it. Either way, we can go ahead if that's, and it's not the vote of the council tonight, it's, if that's the direction, then we can fill out that memo for you.
Thank you.
Further comments? Mr. Fox?
Actually, questions? Aren't we on questions? You said comments.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Okay, I'm just checking. All right. Let me just follow up with, these uses, I guess, or definitions, for lack of a better description, they are from what?
The categories that were established for nonresidential? They're from the analysis that our consultant did based on employment density and salary characteristics of broad industry types.
Where would, here's what I see as something that's, maybe needs to be worked out a little bit more. Where would an institutional use come in? Set aside whether they make money or not. What's an institutional use?
Well, an institutional use, it would depend, like I said, we went through the uses in our zoning ordinance, and we categorized all of those that we felt were appropriate to do so within one of those five categories.
Okay, where would a private school come in?
Private school is under other, I believe, right now.
Maybe I can augment this.
I don't see other. Maybe I'm not reading it right.
Well, I'm sorry, let me...
Okay, and, John, just let me get my thought out before you respond. Like a private school, hospitals make money, churches, they are nonprofit, okay? So I think there's a mix. I'm looking more at of an institutional, school, church, hospital, that type, where they're setting aside whether they make money or not. I don't think that's the issue.
Attached to the resolution dealing with the nonresidential fees is a matrix, it's attachment A to that, or exhibit A. And what that has is the...
Just the one with the small writing?
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
Which page number?
Page 18. And if you go to the top there, and it says ID 551, school, public and private, grammar and high school and colleges. And then, if you go over, you'll see that it has the X under the other category.
Right.
And so what that tells us is that, based on employee density and salary, that use was not able to be readily categorized in one of the five broad categories that we defined. And so, what that means is that when they were to come forward with some type of development proposal, so for instance, in the instance of Cal Lutheran, they submitted an application, they're not categorized, they provided employment and salary information to the Community Development Director, and based on that, they have a very low employment density, they were determined to be most closely aligned with an industrial type of use. So they were determined, at this point, that has a zero-dollar fee.
Okay. And I just note here that you're including a trade or training school and college/university extension class with public and private grammar school, high schools and colleges. I'm assuming that's on the same analysis in terms of number of employees?
I'm sorry, could you...
That's the same analysis you were using for Cal Lutheran?
In terms of how we categorize the uses on the matrix?
Right.
Yeah, we tried to go, because if you recall when we came before you with the ordinance, there were a number of categories that we could have devised, and what we tried to do was come up with broad categories that were most representative of development that was occurring within the city. And then, what we did was go through the further exercise of then taking the defined uses that we have in our ordinance and putting them under those broader umbrella categories.
Just as a observation, I think we didn't, I think we missed an institutions component there, maybe too late, but, and when you're talking about development, the hospital in Cal Lutheran, the only one that's really building right now, so I don't know how that gets squared either.
If I can respond to that, I think one of the reasons that the institutional use was not set up as a separate category is that there could be really a wide range of institutions that would have much different employment density characteristics. The way that the program works is, it's a fee assessed per square foot of building area, and the real rationale, one of the main rationales for placing Cal Lutheran in the industrial category wasn't because they're turning out a product or anything like that, it's just that they have a tremendous amount of square footage per employee of the university, just because of the nature of that type of use. A use like the hospital, also institutional, at least on the surface, it wouldn't seem to me they would have that same type of ratio between square footage of building area and employees. And that, you know, based on the information they submit, and we'll be grappling with that here in the next few months, that might wind up in a different category.
I would agree.
The assisted living buildings, we did have one project, they're also considered institutional. They didn't have their own category, but we do have experience with one assisted living project that has been through the system, has been approved by the Planning Commission, and we did classify that in the lodging category, based again on the employment characteristics and the employment density for that type of facility. So that's, I think, in the way the ordinance was structured in the first place, that's why there wasn't a separate category for institutional.
All right. Going back to the first page of the report, just a couple of items, it outlines that the projection for this year, if we were to move forward with the staff recommendation, would be a, it looks like a $375,000 potential hit to the Housing Trust Fund. Just for the viewing public, could you just very briefly just identify what the Housing Trust Fund is, what we use it for, and what that, what kind of impact that would have?
Okay. The Housing Trust Fund was established as a component of the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And the reason that was established, it was intended to be a repository for the funds that were collected through the Inclusionary Housing Program and the Nonresidential Development Linkage Fee Program, as well as a place to put any other fees that the city determined it wanted to expend on affordable housing. Fees that go into that fund must be expended on uses associated either with trying to produce or producing affordable housing.
All right, very good. This is a temporary program, but in looking at the analysis, you did a good job of taking about 10 minutes to say, I don't know, by the way, this is a commentary. You really don't know in terms of what's going to happen with the market, so it's at least a fair observation that we may be doing this again next year as well.
That is quite possible.
So, I guess the takeaway from this is, this is a significant hit to, you know, we just did the thing with Mini Mansions here, in terms of our opportunity to help the whole, the whole issue of affordable housing, because we, you know, two, three years, we're talking a million bucks. It's, you know, a substantial amount of money.
Well, if I could just comment on that, though. You know, the interesting thing is, and this is probably evidence of the state of the market, the residential market in particular, we have two projects that are potentially subject to this fee, and the likelihood of those going forward is in doubt.
Okay.
With regard to nonresidential, we have, I think, five, five projects that are potentially, some were pre-applications, I think there's two that have been submitted that are potentially subject to this fee, the two that were already entitled and subject were listed here. So, we're not talking a large amount at this point, and I think, you know, again, the premise is that when you begin to see the market turn, you will see applications begin to come in. So that's why our hope is that we can come back before you and say, hey, we think this is a reasonable adjustment to these fees, given where the market is right now and starting to progress forward.
Just by way of observation, the, I'm assuming these projects are townhouses or condos?
Um, yes.
You have 25 grand a unit. That's, those are pretty big projects. You're projecting 375,000.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Additional questions? This is Build Day opinion.
Thank you. Good evening. The issue of nonprofits was brought up earlier. By nonprofits, what would we mean? We wouldn't mean nonprofit housing organizations such as Mini Mansions and the Area Housing Authority. Authority, because those are, they are exempt to these, correct?
That's correct, affordable, developments that produce affordable housing aren't subject to the fee.
Okay, now, primarily, we're looking at residential projects, given the high rate of vacancy, not only residentially but commercially as well, by giving the builders incentives in eliminating all of the linkage fees, wouldn't we add to the already, to an already high vacancy rate by just going forward, eliminating these fees, these units are being built, and, excuse me, continue to remain empty as all the others?
Well, I don't think, we don't see a lot of development activity right now, and again, we're talking about a temporary reset of those fees to zero, and an important point to remember that I probably should have brought out in the presentation is, the fee is payable at time the building permit is pulled, so if we set the fees to zero through the end of June of next year, if somebody pulls a building permit before that time, then they would pay that zero fee, if somebody receives approval to build, but doesn't pull permits until after that date, and the council decides to establish a fee again, they would pay whatever fee is in effect at the time that building permit is pulled, so I don't see it as so much of an incentive to development, and again, remember that we were trying to set a threshold that was considered feasible to development, and right now, I mean, even when we did the study in November, or concluded it in November 2007, two of those categories were considered infeasible, and that was the industrial and research and development, so now I think if you look at lease rates and, and what's going on, you would probably find that all five are infeasible right now.
The staff, the staff report does indicate that this recommendation of zero dollars is to give substantial relief to developers or development.
Well, I don't know that that was the intent of that report, what we're saying is, we're trying to be, recognize what's going on in the larger economy and within the residential and commercial markets, and again, bearing in mind that the premise behind these fees was to set them at a feasible level, where they, they weren't an impediment to development, and so what we're saying is, we don't know what the right threshold to set that fee at is, because we don't know what's happening in the market, so let's set it to zero for a year, wait and see what happens, we'll be able to come back before you again, before the end of June of next year, and present what we feel is going on in the market, and if we feel it's inappropriate to recommend a fee level, we would do so at that time.
Well, while we wait, sit back and wait and reduce this to zero, the housing fund may take a $400,000 hit, potentially, and I'm surprised that, I don't see anyone here tonight from the housing, local housing groups, about this particular proposal, do you know why they may not be here tonight?
Well, I have difficulty speaking to other people's actions, but I can tell you that some of the members were part of our focus group on the, on the inclusionary and Lufi, and I am very careful to notify both the non-residential and the inclusionary groups of any item pending with regard to these fees.
Yeah, we, we worked quite a bit on these linkage fees with the local organizations.
Are we moving toward a question here?
Yes.
Thank you.
We worked for a number of years, we hired a consultant, and, I don't know, to the tune of, I don't know how many thousands of dollars, in order to come up with this formula, do you know how much money was spent on the consultants to help us with the help of local groups?
I'd like to chime in here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, the recommendation is to do a temporary lowering of the fees to zero, to, and it is, in a sense, a local economic stimulus effort in recognizing the negative effect these fees would have on development, these fees were put in place, council member, after an extensive study, we had the business community involved, we had the Area Housing Authority, Mini Mansions, and other housing advocates involved, they're put in place to help generate money for the housing trust fund, as was articulated, they were also put in place to position the city to, to deal with the reality of the redevelopment agency, low mod tax increment fund sunsetting, which it will in a few years, or 10 years down the road, wherever the timeframe was, so it was positioning for that transition, and we are recommending, and this is in line with actions taken throughout the country, to put this type of fee structure on hold for a year, and to see what happens in the local economy, if the local economy picks up, not really if, but when it does, at some point, we would come back, do a one-year assessment, and come back, and the economy is strong again, then put the fee back in place, yes, we run the risk of losing some money for the affordable housing trust fund, we've discussed that with Area Housing Authority and Mini Mansions and our redevelopment staff, and we recognize that, that's the trade-off, but there are projects that are pending that this type of fee does have an impact on their ability to go forward, and given what's happened, we'll be into the budget study session in a little while, and you'll see the harsh reality in our development impact fees, sales tax, et cetera, so that's our recommendation, it's not one year, we'll assess it, come back to see where we're at.
Thank you.
That is how I understood the report, so that was confirmed, thank you.
Additional questions? None. We have no speaker cards on this issue, there are two statement cards, both in favor of, so in lieu of no speakers, we'll close the public hearing and entertain Mr. Fox.
I'm going to go ahead and move the recommendations, one and two, and three, the, I think this makes a lot of sense, in that, option one, going back and doing the process that we went to arrive at the fees, even if we use existing staff, doesn't make a lot of sense, we waste a lot of time and effort, and we're really shooting in the dark, because we have no idea what the, what the trending analysis is going to be with respect to the economy, and I know council members, we went through extensive study and discussion to make sure that the fees were set at the right place, but they would not be a bucket of cold water on efforts to build affordable housing, last time I checked, everybody here is supportive of our efforts to provide housing for various segments of the community in terms of their affordability, anything that we do to make that more difficult, I don't think makes sense in this time, I think staff's done a good job of outlining this, you know, and then based on what staff was saying, I don't know that, these are projections, I really don't know that the housing trust fund will actually take that kind of hit, so, I think this makes sense, if you look on what's going on throughout the state, the nation, the economy, this is a very, very small step that the city is taking to try to keep things moving in a positive way with respect to our housing needs, which are very difficult in Thousand Oaks to begin with, I don't know if those numbers caught any of you, but it's very expensive to live in Thousand Oaks, and it's more expensive to build in Thousand Oaks because of all the things that people want to live here for, the schools and everything else, so it's, it's a complex issue, it does not allow itself to be boiled down to a 15-minute conversation, council's spent a lot of time on this, and I think for a one-year period, again, if you look at what's happening basically every day in the newspaper, this makes a lot of sense, so I'd ask for a vote.
Thank you, comments to the motion, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to support the motion, because for one year, it provides that kind of relief that we're, that we're looking for, but it still, it still does nothing to relieve the cloud that hangs over nonprofits in this exercise, because it can come back, and it can come back a year from now, and it just seems to me that we can do better with that, than this with our nonprofit community, and, and work towards removing them from the potential for imposition of these fees permanently, but going to have to work on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Fox?
I would, I would offer a friendly amendment to this recommendation, and that is to bring back to council, you're going to come back in a year, but I'd like you to bring back a report that deals with both the issues that Mr. Gillette and I talked about, in terms of nonprofit institutional use, I'd like that report to come back with some revised ordinance language, if that's what's needed, 90 days?
Sure.
Is that it?
I don't understand the...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I understand the question, how about this, that staff will go ahead and research, we understand what the question is and the issue, we'll go ahead and research the issue, and then when we come back in a year with an update, we could have a recommended program in place to achieve the desired goal.
Well, I'm not so much tied to the time, other than, I think it's something that needs to be looked at, and evaluated and brought back to the council, what we're hearing from the city attorneys, we can't do that tonight, I understand that, was an agenda, so I'm amending the staff report, I'm amending my motion to direct staff to bring back that analysis to the council, and I'd like that done in 90 days, is that a problem?
We can do that, I'd like a little bit more time just because of our workload.
Okay, how about four months?
Six months, and we'll be there, because, nothing will be done for a full year anyhow, so we, we understand that we come back with a one-year assessment, we should, we should deal with this issue too, but we'll get the research and...
Well, here's, maybe, maybe we're missing something here, what I see is that we're going to revisit this issue in a year, if we had the information in six months to look at this, then we'd be in better position to evaluate it a year from now, rather than do it all once, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, you can do that.
Ms. Albon, do you have something to add?
I'm not sure what it is we're doing, that's, what are we doing in, whether it's six months or 90 days, I'm just asking what it is that you're proposing we're doing.
Well, I think the question that we had was, an institute, I refer to it as an institutional use, why was that, not put in one of the categories that would be evaluated? And the staff basically indicated that they went through what they went through, and they lined up that, no, it falls into a different type of use.
Do you want us to just come back, and you're asking us to reevaluate the categories, as opposed to do an exemption for a category, that's what I'm trying to get at, I really am confused.
I'm trying to reconcile some of the interests that Mr. Gillette had before a year from now, so how would you recommend that we do that?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if you want us to initiate a code change, that we would bring that forward and have the council vote on initiating a code change, and not do that here tonight, if you want us to look at all the categories and bring you back options for a whole bunch of different categories, and not just nonprofits, and you're asking us to report instead of in a year, as we said, but in six months, then we can do that, but I see that as two separate things, so...
I only heard nonprofit and institution tonight, I don't know if other council members have more issues, but those would really be the two that I would focus on, rather than have Mr. Gillette have to put something on the agenda and bring it back, and go through that whole thing, it seems to me if we just deal with it here with respect to this motion as an amendment, we're there.
I understand what you want, but I guess what I keep asking is, do you want us to bring back the information, so then you can decide whether you want to initiate?
Yes, yes, yeah, I think that would be a prudent way to go, so are we good? Six months, you happy with that?
Further comments to the amendment?
Very good.
Ms. Bill De La Penya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will not be able to support the motion, due to the following reasons.
The amendment?
Pardon me?
Comments to the amendment?
Oh, the amendment, as, because it is part of the motion, I will not be able to support it separately, I do, but it is part of a whole motion, so, and I'm voting against the main motion, we're not voting separately on your amendment, correct? Correct, so what I would like to state is that I will not be able to support the motion, because of the following statements that I have already made, first of all, we've worked many years on establishing these housing linkage fees, because of, because we wanted to provide affordable housing for the city, and currently, there is really no greater need for affordable housing, because of the dire economic situation that we are experiencing globally as well, so, seeing that there could be a potential $400,000 hit to the housing trust fund, to me, is a very good incentive to vote against the motion, I don't see how by reducing the linkage fee to zero and allowing more units to be built, those units are not going to be affordable housing, we are adding to an already vacant, high vacancy rate in the city, so, and regarding the setting of the fees, it was the testimony of the hearing last year, that our linkage fees are actually a little bit on the low side compared to other cities, and I don't see that that would have been a, that these fees are a huge financial handicap, currently, for whoever wants to build, so therefore, I will not be able to support the motion.
Thank you, any comments, additional comments? Mr. Fox, maker of the motion?
Just very briefly, if the, everybody pays these fees, and it's in lieu of providing affordable housing, so, and I don't know in terms of making an estimation of what's going to be built, what's not going to be built, if the intention is to stop development, period, then you'd want to put as many fees as possible on anything possible, and make it as prohibitive as possible to develop anything, I don't think that was the intent of this action by the council, it was a good faith effort to provide housing in an area that's very difficult to provide that type of housing, and under the current economic situation, I think staff rightly, and anybody watching what's going on, would rightly come to the determination that that would not be, make a lot of sense right now, so that would be my comments.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries for one, council member Bill De La Penya dissenting.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Prescott, you're going to present TOBA specific plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll make some brief introductory remarks, and then members of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association are here to make a further presentation on the specific plan draft, which they have now submitted to the city, this matter goes back many, many years, the city has had a continuing interest in improving Thousand Oaks Boulevard, both as to aesthetics and functionality, there have been a number of studies over the years, and even somewhat unsuccessful attempt of developing a specific plan a few years ago, approximately five years ago, the business owners, or property owners along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, took it upon themselves to take a little bit different approach, and they approached the city council for support in forming a business improvement district, and the purpose of that district, the primary purpose was to be able to finance with their own resources the development of a specific plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that would be somewhat of a grassroots approach, based on the property owners themselves, as opposed to previous efforts that were mainly city-initiated, the council assisted that group with forming the business improvement district, and they commenced preparation of the specific plan, hired a planning consultant that's had a lot of experience with those types of efforts, including some here in Ventura County, and in the fall of 2006, they had developed a vision statement, which was presented to the city council, and endorsed by the city council as a benchmark for preparing the specific plan itself, so now we have before us, it was distributed to you last week, the draft specific plan as submitted by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, basically, it does incorporate, I'll briefly describe some of its features, it incorporates the vision statement, it discusses the land uses that would be permitted within the specific plan area, which is basically the Thousand Oaks Boulevard frontage and adjacent areas between Moore Park Road and Duesenberg Drive, it develops a list of permitted and prohibited land uses, and also what they call regulated land uses, which are those that would be allowable with a special use permit essentially, there are development standards that deal with, in some, somewhat great detail, in some cases with building design, placement, setbacks, architectural features, et cetera, they also have within that special standards for buildings that actually front directly on the boulevard, other standards that are especially tailored to projects adjacent to existing residential development, as well as future residential development within the specific plan area, and also special standards that deal with mixed use, the specific plan does, would authorize mixed use... The specific plan does—would authorize mixed use, which is typically a configuration with retail on the ground floor and some other type of use above on the second or third stories. That could be either office use or in the mixed-use projects that we tend to think of would be residential use. There are also supplemental design guidelines, very precise architectural detailing that deals with the—basically, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard streetscape itself, the pedestrian experience as you are walking and shopping on the Boulevard. The streetscape of the Boulevard itself is also addressed, both in terms of functionality. The plan proposes adding bike lanes to the Boulevard, narrowing the travel lanes by one foot, maintaining the on-street parking, and special streetscape attributes, both generally along the Boulevard and then in a special area from Erbs Road to Keneo School Road, which they call the Civic Arts Plaza Streetscape Zone. And there are specific call-outs there for the types of street furniture and design and landscaping in those areas, as well as what they describe as enhanced pedestrian nodes, which would be basically narrowing the travelways of the Boulevard to some degree to create a more of a pedestrian environment at the main intersections on the Boulevard and gateways at various locations. The plan also includes an incentive program whereby developers, if they provided additional benefits, could receive additional development opportunities on their property, and those are outlined in the incentives program. An implementation action plan, which is kind of an outline form right now, but indicates the different types of activities that would need to be conducted over time to carry out the specific plan. In our evaluation, we've looked at—described the specific plan. Also, we are advising the council that if the council goes forward to initiate the specific plan—which we do recommend—there's also a need to have the City's general plan amended, the land use element in a conforming manner, and also the circulation element of the general plan. The City Council actually initiated a circulation element amendment for Thousand Oaks Boulevard a number of years ago, and that can be folded into this analysis. We also discuss certain—potential for certain elements of the plan to also require voter approval if ultimately adopted by the council, and those would be with respect to Measure E through the mixed-use program. There is a potential for additional residential units. Some parts of the specific plan area actually do have a residential designation, so it would be part of the process of refinement of the specific plan and quantifying it in terms of how many dwelling units, how much additional non-residential development square footage, to determine whether or not it would be compliant with Measure E and not require a vote of the electorate if the mixed-use component is part of it. And secondly, there are two mobile home parks within the specific plan boundaries. If the specific plan, as it ultimately comes forward, does provide any change to those designations, then that's a matter that would also have to go to the voters. The city does have a zoning ordinance that regulates land use and development design. Coordinating the specific plan with that zoning ordinance will be another factor that staff would be working on as the process goes forward. So we do illustrate the—oh, in terms of development standards, we did include a table. It starts at your package, page 51, where we summarize the principal development standards of the specific plan and place them in a table with what the city's current standards there are. It gives you sort of a numerical list in terms of what kind of differences there might be. Process-wise, as the council will recall, I think it's really very, very important at this point in time to everybody to realize this. This is a draft of a specific plan that the property owners themselves have basically taxed themselves to prepare and offer to the city as a starting point for the city taking it through to adoption of a specific plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As part of that process, staff will work with the Boulevard Association to refine the plan. There may be some aspects of it that we have—may have some suggestions for improvement on. There may be some clarifications needed. How it interfaces and interacts with our other development regulations will definitely work to make it seamless, basically. And also during the next phase would be preparation of an environmental impact report for the project. First part of that is, as I mentioned earlier, quantifying the changes that the specific plan, if adopted, would make to our own general plan or the expected development along the Boulevard corridor, so that principally the cumulative-type impacts—traffic, water supply, wastewater service, other utilities, those sorts of things can be accurately projected and analyzed in the EIR. During that period of time, there would be additional public meetings and public outreach, basically under the joint auspices of the city and the Boulevard Association, and then culminating in public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council. And at the end, depending on how the evaluation turned out and what the final product was that the council adopted, there might be a need for a municipal election on it, either for Measure E purposes or for the mobile home exclusive purposes, or both. So that really concludes my introductory comments. The Boulevard Association has, I believe, at least five representatives here this evening to speak to—I'm sorry—to speak to their plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Questions of Mr. Prescott?
I first want to commend again the Boulevard Owners Association for getting this far in the game. It's been really a long process to try and get something done to the Boulevard. Mr. Prescott, I just—I think you really did state this, but this is an iterative process, and you are going to be—I mean, the things that would give me at least some concern, that there needs to be a lot of discussion about, are the height of the buildings. It seems like the proposed sidewalk width is fairly wide, and then there's some revisions to the oak tree ordinance. I assume that we are going to be having—the staff is going to be looking at those issues and see where those things are appropriate, and that you're going to be coming back and getting community input on those type of issues. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then, is there a limit that we—the city is willing to spend? Are you suggesting a limit that we're willing to spend on the EIR?
We will—before the EIR actually gets started, we will first have to develop a scope of work, and that depends upon the step of kind of refining and quantifying the specific plan. So when we turn it over to a consultant, we can say, well, you know, this project entails X additional number of dwelling units roughly in these locations, this amount of commercial offices, amount of retail roughly in these locations. They need that information to be able to do the analysis, so that'll be the first step. Then we'll do a scope of work and go out with an RFP for an environmental consultant, and at that time, we'll be able to have a cost estimate of what that environmental impact report will cost. We do have an amount recommended in the redevelopment agency budget, and I would like to point out that the city's redevelopment agency, which of course is the City Council itself, is the applicant for the specific plan process. So we're recommending that when you do initiate the specific plan—if you do that, as we recommend—that you do it both as a City Council and redevelopment agency. But the budget does have a line item of $150,000 as a budget amount, and it would—I'm thinking fairly certainly that the amount for the EIR would be less than that. At the time, we actually do the RFP and come back with proposals to the council, and we'll have that cost pinned down.
And it happened that as I was driving onto a Boulevard, I saw a sign up for some proposed storage units, and I see here that that's one of the proposed regulated uses. So where would we go with that? It doesn't seem like with what the Boulevard owners are envisioning, that storage units would be a good use.
The language that they have in the specific plan regarding that particular type of use is pretty much the same as the existing code language, where the storage uses are allowed, subject to a special use permit, if they are ancillary to an existing retail use. That's—and I think that's sort of in line with the—what I think was one of the underlying principles of development of the specific plan, that it provide the property owners with the same types of rights and opportunities they have now going forward under the specific plan. So that part doesn't—I don't think really represents a major change. I think as we refine the specific plan and we take a look at what the purposes of it are and what the intended outcome is, which is a very attractive pedestrian-oriented Thousand Oaks Boulevard experience, some of the uses that are suggested, even ones that are now allowed, might not be as desirable.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions for now. I do want to say that, you know, the Boulevard owners did an excellent job putting this book together, and some of the simulations or some of the possibilities of what could be going on on the Boulevard look very promising, and I really do hope we move ahead on this effort.
Thank you. Mr. Suriel Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Prescott, did the beginning of the development of the specific plan originate at the same—or start at the same time as the creation of the Business Improvement District?
Essentially, yes. The Business Improvement District was formed to develop the specific plan.
Okay. So that's kind of the beginning of this process. All right. Do we have—do you have any kind of proposed timeline or speculate on any kind of timeline and various benchmarks along the way that can be looked at, visualized, as far as an anticipated completion of the process? Or is it, given the state of the economy and a lot of other variables, just too difficult to speculate on a timeline at this point?
I think the only thing I would say is we do provide on page 49, under the next steps section, sort of a sequence of events. And I've indicated—I think somewhere in the report—that it would be a minimum of a year before we would have an environmental impact report done. It is an iterative process. The specific plan has been developed by the property owners themselves, the city staff, and others—although there has been a number of public outreach forums, some of which I attended myself, where the representatives of the association presented the plan and took comments from the public. I think as we refine it and quantify it, there will be more of those public outreach loops and more information about the plan, more input regarding the plan, and it's, I think, going to be—and typically, these types of significant planning efforts that affect a large part of a community do take a fairly long period of time. We have over—I believe there's over 200 property owners within the specific plan area itself. All of them will feel they have a vested interest. They are represented by the Boulevard Association, but there may be times when some of them express themselves individually. You also have the business owners, who to some degree are different than the property owners, and then the general community. So we will try to keep everybody informed and updated, and I think we're planning to use the city's website to a large degree to do that. But it's a process where if we have an EIR in, you know, next spring sometime, I think we'd be very fortunate.
Okay. Well, it seems that—being someone that's been here since prior to incorporation, I'm very aware of the number of studies that have been done on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and that they fill volume—there's volumes and shelves of studies. And so something this comprehensive at this time and with this kind of impetus from the owners, the people that have the real investment, this may be a positive unintended consequence of this current economic situation we find ourselves in, where it's truly a time to plan. And with the slowdown and everything else, perhaps it'll create an opportunity that wouldn't have been there if we were still riding the boom. Thank you.
Additional—yes? Ms. Bolger, opinion?
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Prescott. You mentioned the mobile home, and I was looking for the mobile home section in this particular Boulevard draft, and for some reason, I can't find it. I know I read something about it. Is that—can you please go over that one more time regarding the rezoning that would be potentially requested through this?
Yes, that reference is actually in our staff report. It's described, I think principally on—I think somebody mentioned it, so I won't. There are two mobile home parks within the specific plan boundaries, and I think it's important to note that the specific plan—the draft that the business association is providing is a fairly broad-brush specific plan. It doesn't really differentiate in terms of development standards or land uses between this part of the Boulevard and that part of the Boulevard and individual properties. That's part of the refinement process that I think staff is going to be—one of the things staff will focus on. And the specific plan, for example, at the end of the day, could designate those two mobile home parks as mobile home parks and just leave the general plan alone and leave the zoning alone. That could still be within the framework of the specific plan. If that's the case, then there would not be any need for a measure—I'm sorry—a mobile home exclusive vote, because they wouldn't be changing. If the specific plan, however, did recommend a land use change for any of either one of those, then there would be, you know, a general plan amendment necessary away from the mobile home exclusive designation, and then that would—that's what would trigger the election.
And now to the cost of getting this whole process going, which includes the EIR. Was there any discussion to split the costs with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, or is $150,000 our share of perhaps a larger cost?
Well, I think at this point in time, it's our share. The Boulevard Association itself has taxed itself through the Business Improvement District to provide the funds for the planning consultant. That will be ongoing throughout the specific plan period. The whole point of what they're doing and what we want to do is to implement the goals of our Thousand Oaks Boulevard redevelopment project, which was formed in 1979, I believe it was. Number one purpose of that project was to beautify and make more functional the Thousand Oaks Boulevard corridor, and some steps have been taken. This project and the adjoining lakes project is a part of our redevelopment efforts along the Boulevard. The streetscape improvements that were installed west of the Route 23 freeway is another part. We have our Camelot demonstration project where Harold's House of Omelets and Paragon Pools is—that was done by the redevelopment agency. The Camelot residential project was a redevelopment agency project, as well as the park across the street from that was funded by our agency. So a lot of progress has been made, but I think the streetscape of the Boulevard—I think everybody agrees—needs some improvement, and it's really the goal and purpose of our redevelopment agency to make that happen. So that's why that cost is justified. We do note in the financial impact section of our report that state law does allow local agencies to assess a fee to properties within a specific plan area to recoup the agency's costs of preparing the specific plan. We have not made a decision on that. That's something that would be decided at the time the specific plan is actually brought forward. forward for adoption at the end of this process we're just beginning, but that is an option for the city and redevelopment agency to consider. But we do feel it's a fair contribution at this point.
Mr. Fox, do you have any questions? As we can begin the cards, and then come back and let Ms. Bill Delapena continue.
I think she just, some water went down the wrong pipe. It's gonna be okay.
Okay. Let's just take a breather. We'll sit right here in spot.
It's a lot of money.
Rest.
Take this, take this opportunity.
Stand up and stretch. Okay, if everyone will take their seats, we can get going again. Okay, Ms. Bill Delapena, you were in the middle of, and I would suggest that you speak sparingly to preserve your voice.
Thank you very much for taking a break on my behalf. I do appreciate that. The question that I was going to ask was about community meetings. Mr. Prescott, I believe there were two community meetings held to present this particular draft.
I'm going to let the Business Association talk to that. They've been really the custodians and initiators of this, and have conducted any meetings, any and all meetings, really.
But you did attend at least one of them, you said?
I attended two of them.
Okay.
But there, I know there were more.
And then, and perhaps I will ask them this question later, but were they well attended?
The first one I had about 35 people, I believe, and the second one I had four people.
And because this particular draft was supposed to be published already more than a year ago, but then was being revised due to some comments or newspaper coverage that was not very positive of this particular draft, I'm, I'm wondering whether this is now a scaled-down version of what was originally proposed.
Well, I'll let the Business Association talk about any changes they made.
Fair enough. Fair enough. The other question I have is, at the meetings that you attended, were, was there a presentation of the incentives?
The representatives of the Boulevard Association gave a fairly general presentation. I do believe they did mention incentives in both, in both cases, both of the hearings that I was at.
Right, then I will ask them that as well, because I, I'm looking at the incentives program, and there are points that are being awarded depending on what is being built or proposed. And points can be earned, earned in order to achieve or receive permission to go above the 55 feet, and it says up to 75 feet and six stories high. And I'm wondering whether that is something that was clarified at any of those community meetings.
I don't recall specific questions regarding that from members of the audience, but I don't really, I don't really think it was discussed in that level of detail. It may have been, the Business Association can talk to that as well.
Okay, then I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Additional questions? None. We'll get started with the speakers. Leading off, we have Rick Princeby, followed by Eric Justison, and then followed by Debbie Gregory.
Good evening. City Council, Mayor Clancy, thank you. It's 15 years, 15 years minimum since we've been working on this whole program. And during the 15 years, we've been trying to create a Thousand Oaks Boulevard corridor that I'm sure most of you are aware, and even before, a lot of you were on the city council, we've been working on it. The committees such as the Mayor's Business Roundtable, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, and public outreach programs have been working on this forever. And it's, we've met, we've created a, and worked on this proposed specific plan. Our whole objective was to create a unique commercial corridor for Thousand Oaks, in essence, a downtown. And we had a couple of priorities in that, one that it would be self-sustainable, and the other pedestrian-friendly. And as it turns out, we're at a point right now where small business really needs help. That's really something that we have to help today because of the increased vacancy, and we have to help these businesses survive, because that's what it's all about, is helping the small businesses in town. During that time, we had a former mayor, or at that time, a current mayor, advise us that the Boulevard specific plan wasn't going anywhere, and the only way it would ever go anywhere if, if the property owners took this plan, got a hold of it, created the plan that they wanted, and submitted it to the city council. And they said, once this was done, the city could take a look and finally get an idea of what everybody needed, what everybody wanted, and then we could make our changes and alterations such as we have. That's exactly what took place. The goal of the specific plan was the orderly development of Thousand Oaks Boulevard in a method consistent with the general plan. And I know it was touched on before, but the specific plan area covers just west of Moore Park Road to Duesenberg, over 275 acres, 230 property owners, and it's all in the redevelopment area. The entire cost of this plan has been funded by the property owners through Building Improvement District, and we wanted to do this ourselves, so that way we could have control over what it was we needed to prepare, hire our consultants, get our architects together, and get our plans. The previous planning efforts we had is through community residents, business community, community organizations, city government, property owners, and committee of former mayors. All have reviewed and work with us to help develop the plan. The highlights of the specific plan is, number one, we want the corridor to be pedestrian-friendly, to have bicycle paths, to improve the aesthetics, mixed use, subject to Measure E, setback requirements adjusted, we want shared parking, we want flexible building heights. Are we on this, on this three-minute thing, on this as well? Okay. Sorry, I didn't know we were on that.
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Fox?
Mr. Princeby, could you just elaborate a little bit more on your?
Okay, all right. The flexible building heights, and I did want to just make a comment because it came up later. We reduce previous approved heights in Thousand Oaks. In the past, there were buildings that were six stories tall, there was the Exxon buildings, there was the Westlake Plaza Hotel, there's our own parking structure here. We actually brought down the height to an average of 75 feet. We also encourage plazas, public art, and open space. We encourage outdoor dining, and we want to streamline the permit processing. The city residents, property owners, have had the benefit of the architects, designers, engineers, space planners, landscape architects, and professional consultants volunteering their time and expertise to the creation of this specific plan for more than 15 years. And now it's time for the city council to move forward. I think it's very important to note, too, that the property owners are not asking for the city to fund this plan. All we're asking for is the tools to be able to fund it ourself. We'll spend the money, we'll do the things we have to do. We know what it takes to create a plan that's going to be a viable entity for all the residents and all the businesses of the community. So what I'm asking is that please accept this plan and authorize a request for proposal so that we can get the environmental impact report on the way. That's my, that's my.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Yes, Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Perhaps you would be the appropriate person to answer the questions that I asked of Mr. Prescott regarding the community meetings, and how well they were attended, and whether the incentives program was explained to them in detail.
We've had community outreach meetings since we started the Building Improvement District, which has been going on for five years. We had them at all different times of the day, we've had them on the weekends, we've had them in evenings. Sometimes we would have 30, 35 people attend, sometimes, as Mr. Prescott said, we might only have four or five attend. We've had Building Improvement District meetings on a regular basis that have been publicized to everybody in the community that have been, I believe, on the city web. Mailouts have gone out, they're all public meetings, and we've made them open to everybody. And even after we kept revising and getting the specific plan down to a point where we were ready to present our final draft to the city, we had a couple of more public outreach meetings. One we had on a Saturday, one we had during the week in the evening, right here at the city hall. In addition to that, we have made presentations to service clubs, we've made presentations to the Chamber of Commerce, and other organizations such as that, so we've had an awful lot of public outreach programs.
Okay, and was the incentives program at the two most recent meetings explained in detail?
By incentive program, I just want to understand exactly what you mean, because we've gone over the draft of the specific plan. What, what do you mean by the incentive?
For example, the incentives earned and the points earned, and if, if you earn two points, then you can earn an additional 10 foot of, 10 feet of building height, up to a maximum of 75 feet, six stories high.
Okay. We have discussed this, and how we discussed it was, which is specified in the plan, that if you're able to give some other benefits, such as more greenbelt area, more public art, more plazas, more something like this, there may be ways where in, in lieu of this, you'll be able to get more height and all, provided the fall, excuse me, within the guidelines that we have for the corridor.
And if I remember correctly, last year, there was media coverage, newspaper coverage of a, of a proposal that I personally did not see, and there seems to have been some public opposition perhaps, or concern regarding the height. But you're saying tonight that the 75 feet, six stories, is actually a smaller version of what was originally proposed?
No, there was never any public concern over that meeting. I was at that meeting, and there was a newspaper reporter where she got the information, I don't know, because the word "high-rise" never took place, and she reported a story that we were all shocked with, because the reporter even came up to me after, and I asked if there were any questions. She says, no, everything was fine, but everything reported was completely out of context. That was never said, it was never done. The plan never called for that. From the initial draft that we put together, we have always reduced the height, we've always kept everything under control. The reason we have average height is so we don't have boxes, that we have an interesting architectural element. So this, this story that appeared never took place, and it was never altered or changed. Our draft is the same draft that we've had since then.
Okay, well, then I believe it is individual interpretation as to what you consider a high-rise building. Does it begin at four feet, five feet, six feet? Anyone could probably argue that six could be considered high-rise. So without going into the messenger, attacking the messenger, I'm just, will want to focus on the facts of this, of this proposal. And it does say that you can go as high as six stories. I just wanted to clarify that.
It says 75-foot average. And, and again, if you understand 75-foot average, if you take a look at the promenade or any of the other projects being built today where they have some towers and so, some have lower roofs, what they're trying to do is, again, not just have a box, they're trying to get an interesting architecture. So when they talk about that, it really, it's not talking about an overall height of the project.
What about affordable units? Are there any affordable units being proposed in this particular plan?
We, the only thing we even talk about in residential is we're saying that mixed use could be available, subject to Measure E. Right now, Measure E does not permit us to put residents on the Boulevard. So we couldn't propose residents on the Boulevard. What we have to do is say, if the city and the voters decide to put mixed use on the Boulevard, then we can. One of the advantages of residents on the Boulevard is we're talking about sort of bonus density. If you already have the land and the project that's been built to be a feasible commercial project, and now you could add some residential units, you've basically already paid for a lot of the land and a lot of the cost. Therefore, it allows you to put these residential units and sell them at a lesser cost than if you just had to go out and buy land and just use them for that one particular thing. So the plan, again, talks about mixed use, but again, it talks about it's subject to Measure E.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Princeby. Next speaker, Eric Justison? Next speaker, Debbie Gregory. And Debbie will be followed by Frances Prince, followed by Cal Johnson.
Thank you, and I hope I'll get the same time considerations, considerations as the prior speaker, because I have some very valid questions. This is the plan, and it might be a good one. I don't really know, because it was made available late Friday to the people of this community online, and it's eight chapters, over 200 pages. I've been skimming it, and I've come up with a couple of questions. I certainly would like to have the opportunity to be able to look at it. And I'd like to comment that there were public meetings, there were two workshops on March 11th and April 18th, and this plan, a number of people asked for it. I did not go because they told me it would not be available. They asked for it, they said they were still working on it. So to get the plan tonight and have you initiate anything without the public having the opportunity to read it, to comment on it, to ask questions, is ludicrous, and it's not good government. It's not good public policy. It was taken 15 years, at least give people the opportunity to read it. And that leads me to a couple of questions. And I want to make it clear, I don't have an opinion yet, but I do have concerns, okay? And I may support this, because the Boulevard does need work. I don't dispute that. Okay? The bottom line I want to know is, you know, this is the most significant and dramatic changes to our city. So is this going to benefit the greatest number of people here, or does it only going to benefit a small group of people who own property on the Boulevard that will be getting a maximum return on their investment? At the end of the day, are we going to deal with traffic? Who's going to pay for that traffic mitigation? Who's going to have to be in that traffic? The Attitude Survey of traffic was the most important concern of people. Mixed use was the least concern of people. Also, they hired RRM Design Group. I was just curious, is this an in-town group, or did we again hire another out-of-town consultant so that our dollars could go out of the city again? That's a question. The plan, oh, next question, who's going to pay for it? According to this plan, there's a number of revenue sources. One is redevelopment money. Redevelopment money is our money, it comes from us. It is not being funded by the Boulevard Association, it says the general fund. Well, we already have a $6 million deficit and have to dip into the resources. So if we take from Peter to pay Paul, who doesn't get paid? Those two areas, there's other funding sources, concern me, and I'd like to know more about it. I'd also like to know, does this benefit all the Boulevard owners, or is it just some of them? And I have concerns about the height limits. The height limits are 75 feet, they can buy into if they get points. 75 feet is six stories. Is that on top of parking? Are we, you know, or is it six, 75 feet from the ground up without parking? And, you know, if it's, it's pretty high. It, you know, reminds me of Ventura Boulevard in the Valley. It, you know, reminds me of Ventura Boulevard in the Valley. This is a major program, and I think that we, as citizens, if they want us to embrace it, make a document available, make the points available so that we can look at it. Maybe we'll come aboard. But don't bring it in on Friday afternoon, you know, after six o'clock and put it online and expect people to download it and hopefully come aboard. It just isn't equitable. That's not good government. And I hope that the concerns about the height, who's going to pay for it, and public input, I hope you will not initiate anything until the public has the chance to read this and digest it. No one can read over 200 pages this quickly. And I only got this because it was at the counter, and I don't think any other of my fellow citizens have had the opportunity to read it. And on something this important that will change Thousand Oaks Boulevard, please give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. And the next speaker, Francis Prince, followed by Cal Johnson, followed by Matthew Breiner.
Good evening. My name is Francis Prince. I'm a resident of the city of Thousand Oaks. This is a very nice opportunity for me to pick up a thread that is over thirty years old, to be exact, thirty-three years old, and to tie it to the present. It is a very long time ago. I served on the city council, and the first appointment that I made was to the planning commission. It was a gentleman by the name of Dr. Peter Ristebin, who was an administrator at what was then California Lutheran College. Shortly after his appointment, a few months after he started working on the planning commission, he met with me about what he felt should be a top priority in the city of Thousand Oaks. It was the appearance and the viability of Thousand Oaks Boulevard that concerned him. And that, of course, was when the Auto Mall was much smaller, long before the promenade in Westlake, before the North Ranch Mall, before the Oaks at the other end of town, and it was before the lakes and before this structure was even contemplated. For the few years that he served on the commission, he worked with the staff, with some of the property owners, and with others to improve the quality of the Boulevard. Since that time, there have been a number of studies, plans, efforts, and accomplishments on the Boulevard. The plan you have before you this evening, though, is the only one that has been developed by the owners of property on the Boulevard. It is designed with a concept of bringing people to this area because it is vibrant, pleasant, fun, attractive, and a good place for businesses because people in the community, and hopefully without, will like being here. It's designed to be people and family-friendly. With your acceptance of the staff recommendation to begin the process, and I want to emphasize "begin the process," this plan is being presented to you not for your approval by any stretch of the imagination. It will require many public hearings, much opportunity for the public to have their full input, for the staff to have their say, and for the other people that have an interest in this to have their say. But it will begin the review, begin the review by the city staff, and a real milestone will have been reached. So much of this central transportation corridor was developed before the city was formed and without any real planning concepts. Your actions this evening will set the stage for the larger community to participate in the vision of what is a central corridor of the community. I hope you will move forward this evening by accepting the staff recommendations and setting in motion a community planning effort for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you very much for your service as planning commissioners, councilperson, and mayor.
Oh, thank you.
We certainly appreciate your efforts. And stay right there. There's some questions down here.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Irwin.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. I'm just kind of curious, how, because you have a long, long-time experience here in the city. How would you envision, let's say that this plan is put into place, how do you envision development occurring? Do you, that improvements first occur near the Civic Arts Center, or is it kind of the whole Boulevard at once? It's a pretty long corridor and a lot of mishmash in between.
It's interesting that you should ask that particular question because I was on a drive today with my seventeen-year-old grandson, and completely out of the blue, had nothing to do with what is occurring here this evening, he says, "You know, Grandma, there are some friends of mine that asked me a question about Thousand Oaks Boulevard and why it looks like it does." And they knew that I had been involved in the city at one time, and they thought, he thought perhaps I could answer that. And I said, "Well, no, I can't answer that, at least not in any depth." But I did tell him about the meeting this evening and what was going to be begun. And he said, "Well..." And he asked me not exactly, but somewhat the same question. So I'm going to tell you what I told him. He said, "Well, you know, I'm frankly not smart enough to figure that out." And what I see this as is setting in motion a process that will incentivize people who have that desire and the ability to redo what presently exists. Because, as you know, most of the Boulevard is built out. There's just a few vacant pieces of land on the Boulevard. I don't know where it will start, and I don't know how it will start. I do know this, I feel it very deeply, without the community at large and without the council and without the city staff seriously looking at all aspects and tearing it apart and putting it back together again, none of it will start. And that's not a very good answer, but it's the best one I can come up with.
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Thank you again.
Okay.
Next speaker, Cal Johnson, followed by Matthew Breiner, followed by Nick Kidway.
Dr. Clancy, council members, city manager. My name is Cal Johnston. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. And before I get involved with other aspects of this, I wanted to acknowledge the men and women who've been spending better part of ten years, spending really thousands of hours, volunteer hours, on our behalf on the Boulevard in various ways. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate you, the city council, because you are the ones that had the courage three or four years ago, it's about four years ago now, to authorize the forming of the Business Improvement District. We discussed this in great detail, and some cities don't want that to happen because they don't want to lose control. You people delegated a responsibility to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and the bid to develop a specific plan, and for that, you're to be congratulated. You've delegated it down to the people where it matters, and where they're the ones that are going to make it happen. You also then followed that up by approving the vision that we put together. And we submitted that, or I think there were sixteen points, and the council approved that unanimously and without a change. That shows, again, your dedication to delegate to the business people, to the people on the Boulevard, to 220 property owners, that you have not only confidence in them, but respect for their work. The bid is managed by TOBA, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. We have over 220 property owners. They have all been kept in the loop. They, a lot of them do not attend meetings, some do, and we encourage that. In the last two meetings we've had, we did a mailing to 220 property owners, encouraging them to turn out. One of our former speakers complained about the fact she didn't have the study ahead of time. Well, the study wasn't ready to, in effect, provide to the public until the staff received the study officially from us. That person should have attended some of the meetings. We've had about six of them, and we encourage attendance. We have a long history in Thousand Oaks.
Mr. Johnson, you need to start wrapping it up.
Okay, thank you. So I encourage the council to start the process and authorize the environmental impact report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Oh, Ms. Irwin has one. You have to sit forward so I can see you.
Caught with chocolate in my mouth. Excuse me. I'm curious, the bid was formed to create the specific plan, and obviously that you've been collecting the fees from the business owners along the way. How long do you, will you need that income from the bid now that the specific plan has been submitted?
Well, number one, it is not the only purpose of the bid. The bid is for the improvement and the revitalization of the Boulevard. The specific plan is just part of that process. So that's one point. The bid has a life of five years, and at that termination date or prior to it, we will, if need be, go back to the property owners for an extension of that bid. We have spent or committed somewhere around $100,000 for the planning process to date. And that's money that the city has not had to spend responding to you, Ms. Bildropina. The city has a partner, meaning we're putting up our own money. And we want to have incentives for the property owners to improve their property. That's the reason for the incentives, and it's important.
Mr. Johnson, you need to restrict yourself to the question. Is that it?
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Breiner, was I skip? Nick Kidway. Matthew Breiner, is that a skip?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I would just like to, first of all, echo Ms. Prince's comments. I think that she had, as a resident of Newbury Park, I don't know anybody on the business, on the TO Business Association, but I would like to commend them for putting forward a plan. I've been here for a long time, and I've seen the Boulevard deteriorate and continue to go downhill, and thousands of dollars and millions of dollars may be being spent on cosmetic repairs, and something needs to be done in a comprehensive manner to address turning the Boulevard into a viable and attractive place to live, work, and shop. I'm glad to see that this, this plan is being put forward, and I think this is a great start. So I would, now, first of all, I'd like to recommend that you do move approval of this, of the proposal, staff's proposal, and that you move forward to get the process started. However, I do have some comments I think that would be appropriate, that as the plan moves forward, maybe that would be looked at. Number one, I believe that there should be an additional public transportation element to this plan. In order for this project to be really viable, there needs to be really good public transportation, frequent and, you know, useful public transportation up and down the Boulevard to really turn this into a pedestrian and livable community. Number two, I would look at, possibly even, again, in order to facilitate a pedestrian-friendly environment, that you actually look at more aggressive reductions in parking requirements than were proposed under the specific plan, trying to turn this, again, away from a place that we drive to, to a place where people would live, work, and stay. Also, I would like to see that, in fact, what we have right now is a plan that is proposed for just a long strip, along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I believe that to be truly viable, this plan needs to look at at least having some major nodes, potentially around the western edge and maybe in the middle and maybe somewhere toward the east, that would create a larger area, that would create, you know, create nodes for transportation and for development. And really, I think it could be looked at as going from the freeway all the way to Hillcrest. And again, I just think that the form, some of the zoning changes that have been required, I think are great. I don't think they go far enough in some ways. I think we should have more form-based code changes and actually more aggressive height, you know, that the height limitations, I don't have a problem with. I think that some of the setback requirements maybe are inappropriate. Ultimately, we should look at, not just looking at having a project where we have a commercial building next to a single-family home. We need to widen out our scope and look at a pyramid going down, out, away from the Boulevard of densities. So I would suggest that we don't look at just trying to think about what happens today when a building is next to a residential structure. Look about what that would mean down in the future, and we want higher density as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and effort. We have Nick Kidway, followed by Suzanne Duckett, followed by Dowdome.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of Concerns for the Thousand Oaks. I don't know, I'm a little disappointed and shocked. I don't know if the bid wants to run like the city. Believe it or not, Mayor, I just went to the restroom, and guess what? There was a woman there. And this is the best time to clean the restrooms. I mean, this is the way the city is run. I mean, I just cannot believe it. I mean, it just continues to amaze me. It's unbelievable also that anybody that questions the city council or city is attacked from the podium. I mean, activists were said, "You should have attended those meetings." Well, I was at the March 11th meeting, and here, these are my notes. That's the first, I mean, even at that, these meetings, no paperwork has been ever handed out. And I asked for it, and the gentleman had a PowerPoint presentation, and he said, "Send me an email, and I will send you my notes." Never even bothered to say that they would send me the PowerPoint presentation. And I'm one of those people that support what the bid is doing. I mean, what about these so-called slogan people that are just looking for an opportunity to stifle growth? But I don't like playing with the numbers or fudging with the numbers. I mean, I cannot believe it. I mean, how can you say average of seventy-five feet? That means I can have a ninety-feet-tall building, and I can have a forty-feet. My average will be seventy-five feet, so a hundred feet is not a high-rise. I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, to play with the public sentiment and try to say that we've been doing it for fifteen years, that's a complete lie. I've been doing it for fifteen years. Mr. Gillette has probably been doing it for fifteen years, these Hyatt Palmer reports and these other reports, because we were on committee. But this was a new attempt, brand-new attempt for the last four years, and they have never given any paperwork or any information on it. One of the most important things is this Measure E thing, because I would like, and many other people, see the need for additional housing and have mixed use. And rather than go ahead and then find out that the voters will reject it, and in fact, we don't even know. And I asked this question in the March hearing, "Do we need Measure A?" And they said, "Probably." And every time, you know, in the last fifteen years, Xena called it measure exception. There's always been an exception that we don't need Measure E. So this should be looked into, and I need a motion for that. In fact, you are not able to vote on it today because the lady said she, there was nothing available, and I went even before coming over here, the report would not open. Everything else opened, but the report would not open. I mean, what's the rush? I mean, you need to continue till the next meeting at least, and this after the Charbo's hamburger just closed up. What these people are trying to do is make the rent so high that mom-and-pop businesses cannot survive. That's what this is. I mean, you were, I mean, trying to protect businesses with Home Depot, but that was not the truth. And with the red light, I'll just say, I mean, you did not give us people the time for the Home Depot. The people from the bid, they should not be timed. I mean, they're making the presentation rather than playing with the rules. I mean, this is such a rogue agency. I mean, I mean, the people of Thousand Oaks are so wonderful, but the government, Mr. Fox, it just sucks. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Suzanne Duckett? Followed by Dowdome, followed by Rick Leno.
Oh, good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. If this project is truly going to be self-sustaining, which is what the first gentleman said that their goal was, I have three major concerns. One is electricity, the second one is water, and the third is the sewer. the sewer. If this project goes up, I want it to be a solar city. I want every single building with solar units on top. We have a finite amount of energy, and if this is truly going to be self-sustaining, they're going to have to put up. The second one is water. LA is going to ration water. I want every single toilet to be, to recycle. I want the water to be recycled. I want it truly to be self-sustaining. In other words, if they have to go to Europe and get oil toilets, that's what they need to do. The sewer system here in our city is only made, will only serve to build out. This, obviously, this project's going to go above and beyond build-out. So they have to have their own sewer system, okay? Or they have to pay for our new sewer system. I do not want to pay, I do not want to, I do not want to pay one nickel or one dime for a new sewer for these people. I do not want my water rationed for these people. They can give me all of their water allotments. Cal Johnston, I want your water allotment. Thank you. I want a number designated when their water starts. Like, if it's, if this, if this is going to be approved, the day that it's approved, the water that they have there now is what they're only going to ever get. Ever get. These are huge problems that need to be addressed before this kind of a project goes in here in this city. To approve this without looking at these items is not conscientable. And I think you probably can all agree, I mean, I'm hoping you agree, that these items need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. Dowdome, followed by Rick Limo.
Good evening, council members, mayors. My name is Dowdome, and I live in Newbury Park. Thank you for the opportunity. It's really interesting to hear you discuss the issue of housing affordability before we engage into this discussion here, because I believe that part of the solution to the issue of the housing affordability is embedded in this type of project. By providing more diverse types of housing, such as mixed use, stack housing or tower houses, for example, that's how you can help address affordability. But I would like to share with you perhaps some vision and what I imagine that may happen in 20 years, because with some luck, I will be still around. I'll be 75, and hopefully is still an active senior. And by that time, I probably would prefer not to live in a single-family home, and I would be able to choose to rent or own an apartment right here on Tilt Boulevard, where I can just walk down to the store and pick up a loaf of bread or buy a cup of coffee on a daily basis. And I would have no need for a car. I don't have to worry about maintaining a car. I don't have to worry about insurance. And I can take a trolley to the Civic Arts Plaza to catch a show. I can walk to the local park and maybe say hi to former councilwoman Irwin and reminisce about the time when she voted for the specific plan, maybe. So the question is, how do we get from here to there? I recognize that what we're looking at tonight is only the first of many, maybe steps. And much work remains. A lot of people raised a lot of good issues tonight. And what I would caution you is, because I just had, like the lady who spoke before me, I just barely had time to skim the specific plan, and we need to look at the details. The details would help lead us there. And I will submit to you that maybe to help you come up with more predictability in the specific plan, that you consider a form-based code. Form-based code is a type of code that would start from the desired outcome, and you go backward and you create a code that would allow you to arrive at the desired outcome. And your staff can probably explain it to you in more detail. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdome. Appreciate it. Ms. Limo.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. A lot of comments were made tonight, but I thought it might be a good idea to sort of start out with some of the facts. Many of us, in fact, almost everybody that we've been working with the last two years on this, have been working on this Thousand Oaks Boulevard plan for 15 years. To give you a little bit of history, 15 years ago, one of our initial plans was, let's get together with the Business Roundtable, and let's get every merchant on Thousand Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, to hand out the same bag. And on the side of the bag was going to be printed how good it is to shop locally. That's where some of this started, when the Hyatt Palmer study and other things kept getting waylaid in politics. I thought it was important to remind you tonight that what you're doing, the property owners and the business owners and even the city staff and the city council, really come in a distant second. What you're doing tonight, and what we've been all trying to do, is pay attention to the citizens of Thousand Oaks. The Attitude Survey has taken place in Thousand Oaks since 1969, and in the last 15 years, three Attitude Surveys, the Boulevard and consideration of what takes place on the Boulevard has been ranked number one by our citizens. This is no new idea. This is finally coalescing what people say they want. There was a misrepresentation tonight about traffic. Number one, the citizens wanted to improve the aesthetics of a Boulevard. Number two, they want to keep on-street parking. They want to increase pedestrian access. Strong number-two answer, 36.6 percent. And in regards to traffic, they want to maintain the Boulevard as a through street, which you'll know the specific plan does. And they want free-flowing traffic speeds. Now, when you take all those put together, the only guarantee you have is not everybody is going to be happy. But we have to work for the common good. I think it's important to also reiterate that even the Acorn dealt with that meeting where building heights were misrepresented, and in editorial, supported the work that was being done with the specific plan. You could get up here and say, "I can have a 10-foot building and a 1,000-foot building," and come up with an average in-between. That's twisting the plan. If you look at the plan itself and you see that in certain areas, certain things are allowed, that's what makes the difference. It's also important for you folks tonight, and I've got a lot of points, but I'm going to jump to the last one. It's important to focus on the timetable, because this has been going on in excess of 15 years. In its time. We're in tough economy right now. That's good. It's going to save money on an environmental impact report, and it is going to let a company get their work done quicker. So you could be looking at a six-to-seven-month environmental impact report, and through that process, the public outreach process continues. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I ask if you have any questions.
Questions? None? Yes, Ms. Irwin has a question.
Well, you just mentioned the environmental impact report taking six or seven months. So what do you, when we have staff that's saying it's going to be taking a year, what do you base that on?
Well, one of the things I'm basing it on is 10 years of experience in hiring companies to do environmental impact reports. And if you look at the economy or the economic curve when times were really, really good, and there was a lot of development going on, you waited a year, you waited 14 months, took a time for environmental impact report to get completed. Right now, there's a lot of people, I probably receive three phone calls a week, or a company receives three phone calls a week from companies looking to see if there's any work available. So they have staff, and they can sort of step things up and get it done a little bit quicker. Also, remember the fact that we're looking at a specific plan. It's not like development of a project. It's not a project. It is a skeletal plan that addresses the zones, the zoning and the codes for this area. Remember that every project along the way, when a project really happens within that specific plan, they're going to have to do their own environmental document, which could be a mitigated negative debt. It could be a supplemental environmental impact report themselves. So there are plenty of benchmarks along the way to make certain that nothing slips through the cracks. That's why I believe you can get it done quicker.
Thank you, Mr. Limo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That is the last of our public speakers. Return to staff.
Nothing to add. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Albano has a question or a comment.
Thank you. Just to, I wanted to, did want to respond, because one speaker was talking about concerns about water, sewer, whether there was enough. And that is part of the purpose of doing environmental review, even though the plan is, as one speaker just said, a skeleton of what could take place. There still will be vetting out of those issues, and the environmental process is really the major way that's going to take place, and to look to make sure that we have adequate capacity for whatever the plan may or may not be calling for. And that's what we really need to look at, so that if there's the ability to expand what currently could be built, then we will have to look at the adequacy of our resources, and that's always part of the environmental process.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Fox.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and move the staff recommendation of one, two, and three. And I think I speak for the council when I, we can't thank the Business Improvement District and the folks that have been working on this plan for many, many years, enough for their leadership and their insight, and they're willing to put a lot of time and effort into something that's important to all of us. You know, as, as council sat and listened to some of the comments tonight, I was struck by a few things. First was the 15-year mark, because it, I was, it might have been one of the very first things I dealt with on the city council. And, because I remember the 107 group, whatever that was called, and, incidentally, this process that's been put together, in part, is done because of the mistakes, although good intentions, and mistakes that have been made over the past 15 years on why nothing did happen on the Boulevard. And I would, I would submit that that's probably a good thing. That's probably a good thing, because I think we may have made some mistakes along the way, and this process has been very, very different. First, Mr. Limo brought up, it's really not debatable. There's no question, we all hear it in the community, that addressing the Boulevard in some fashion, it is a top community issue. It is a top community issue, and data can support that. Second, Ms. Prince brought up that this is really a community planning process. We're not approving a project. It's a process. A specific plan is not about one individual project. It's a plan. And in order for the community to have the ability to evaluate it and to weigh in and to give opinion, they must have a tangible document. They must have a tangible document. One of the mistakes that was made in the group of 107 is we started with a blank palette, if you will. And we tried to design by committee, 107 of us, what the Boulevard should look like. Good intention, it didn't work. So in order for the community to give input, to evaluate, to opine, to give the council their perspective, they need a tangible document at least to start working with, and that's what this is. It's been said that in going through this in detail doesn't really, in my view, make a lot of sense right now, specifically because of a number of the comments that were raised. In order for the public to evaluate it, you must have an environmental analysis. Traffic, parking, a number of things that brought, but that needs to be analyzed. And the only way to do that, in fact, the legal requirement to do that, is an EIR. And that's one of the steps that we're taking tonight. Council certainly can't evaluate a project or a process of this magnitude without the supporting environmental evaluation. And so that's what, that's what we're looking at. The stakeholders can't really opine and weigh in unless there's an environmental evaluation and there's a tangible document. And so it makes a lot of sense what we're doing. The other component I think we need to look at are checks and balances. And I think the folks that have handled this very well so far have done their level best to provide the checks and balances, but now the process is really starting. They've done a very good job and have outlined a number of the things in terms of their vision statement of what they'd like to see in council. It is true, council approved that unanimously some time back. But the checks and balances are one of process. They are one of state and local law. They are one of public evaluation and public input, and many others. So there are checks and balances with this process. And I think it's important to note that any extensive changes, extensive changes that would be contemplated on the Boulevard would certainly have to go to a vote. Would certainly have to go to the vote. So ultimately, it would be the folks of Thousand Oaks that would vote on mixed use, for example, on the Boulevard. And so I think there's a lot of good checks and balances that are already built in. In the end, there'll be public hearings, there'll be public input, but this is the first step. And I think issues of who's making money, who's not making money, and some of those issues, they really have no place in this. If this is going to be driven by the private sector, which it is, they've paid for it, that's really not a concern. And candidly, I don't hear that from folks. What they're concerned about is quality, a quality design process, public participation, and something that makes sense for Thousand Oaks. And I think this does that. It certainly is the right step. And so I'm going to move recommendations one, two, and three. Again, I'm going to thank the business community for their efforts. They are a huge stakeholder in this process, and I think we need to all congratulate them for their efforts. But ultimately, I want to emphasize, ultimately, and I know they join us hand-in-hand, ultimately, it will be the public that decides what happens on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Albano, you have something you need to put out?
Just clarifying that for recommendation number one, when the council votes, they're voting as both the council and the RDA.
Thank you. And Ms. Bill Alpena, you have a comment?
Actually, I had a question for staff, for Mr. Prescott. How many reserve units do we have in our Measure E bank? Housing units, that is.
It's around 175. We will be bringing to you, next meeting, a general plan amendment involving open space, which, if approved, would add, I think, around 200 more units. So that, if that goes forward, you'd be close to 400.
Okay. And just to clarify, those units are held in a bank, so to speak. And should there ever be a Measure E vote, which allows the people to vote on whether to increase the residential, then we assume that before that happens, those units will have been used up?
I think so. The only, the only time a vote would be required is if the city council approved a general plan amendment that went above, either in residential dwelling units or commercial acreage, went above the level that existed in November of 96. So there wouldn't be a need for a vote if, if the amendment didn't go above that. And that's part of the quantification process that needs to happen before the EIR can.
Okay, thank you. I'm asking the question because, as I, as my colleague mentioned, it may be necessary to bring this to a vote of the people, should it exceed the number of units that we have in the bank. And the reason I'm mentioning Measure E is because as part of the incentives program, there are also points that one can earn toward earning some of the units that are in that particular bank account, for lack of a better word. The, I certainly endorsed the concept, gosh, about two years back or so, and it was unanimous vote. And in hearing some of the testimony tonight, I thought that perhaps this proposal had changed from last year, when, when all of this came out in the open. changed from last year when all of this came out in the open. And it appears that there really haven't been that many changes of any at all compared to the initial proposal. And there are concerns that I have with this particular proposal, but I would like to preface that by saying that I strongly believe there is a need for improving the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Thousand Oaks Boulevard could be much, could be made much more viable, could be much more pleasing to the eye. And in saying that, it is my hope that perhaps you will eventually be able to listen to the concerns of the residents here once this does go out and in the open and is presented. But with this vote tonight, we're getting the ball rolling, and you're asking us to endorse a concept. Yes, I understand it is just a concept, but who knows how it will be changed, if at all. If it hasn't changed in over a year, despite some public opposition to what was reported earlier, I'm wondering whether it will change at all another year down the road. My main concern is the height, which I mentioned. When I see that something could potentially be six stories high, I wonder about the impact on traffic as well as the impact on the infrastructure. When I see that there is a proposal to reduce the bike lanes to make room for median, when the city survey states that there is support for adding bike lanes, then that is a concern to me as well. When I see that there is no strong support in the city attitude survey for mixed use, and it is being proposed in the specific plan, then that is a concern to me as well. When I see that there is no guarantee that affordable housing will be provided or senior housing will be provided, and that there is a request to change the land use designation of the only affordable housing in town that we have, namely mobile home parks, then that is a concern to me as well. So having said that, I really want to see a wonderful change, an improvement on the Boulevard, but in its present conceptual form, I cannot support it due to the concerns that I lined out. Now, if there are changes a year down the road, and there is public input and the public thinks it's wonderful to have four, five, six-story buildings, smaller bicycle lanes and so forth, then certainly. But it would have to be proven that that is truly what the citizens want. And putting it to a vote of the people, perhaps, if that will happen, that of course is another way to gauge the sentiment of the citizenry as well. So having said that, I do wish you good luck. I hope that this will be improved, much more improved than what it currently is. And depending on, you know, the outcome, hopefully it will be something that I will be able to approve in its final form. So good luck to you.
Thank you. Mr. Chillette?
Thank you, Mayor Glancy. I heard reference to the first step a couple of times through the presentation tonight. The first step in October of 1964, the 27,000 residents that lived here took the first step. They formed their own municipal government and take control of land use issues, government, and everything else related to an independent freestanding community. I see this as a major step along that way. There have been, there have been a number of issues over the 45-year history of the city, most of which have been positive on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a couple that hiccups, like a four-story bland, no personality Bank of America building that's a block. Why doesn't Hampshire Road go through to tie into Hillcrest? A couple of questions like that. I believe this time, the optimum word here is process. And this time, it's led by the very people that have the major financial investment, but also a commitment to the quality of life in this community. The people that derive their living, support people, they are us. They're not an occupying group. They are our community, and they have committed their own resources to bring forward a plan. And I'm very optimistic, sometime down the road, we'll start to bear a very significant fruit for the community. For all of those reasons, I will, I will support the motion and again, extend my personal appreciation to everyone in the community that has worked so hard to get us to this point, and now we move forward. And the opportunity that exists, one of the speakers referenced water and power and those things. We seem to be moving into an age where so much more awareness of the opportunities with solar and renewable energy and all of those things are on the forefront, that this is an excellent opportunity for us to get into the, get into the activity of this type of usage in a usable, viable, pleasant, approachable segment of our community that's so important to the financial well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chillette. Pardon me. Ms. Irwin?
I am going to support Mr. Fox's motion, and he did cover most areas. A couple of things I'd like to just clarify. There was no talk about housing without a Measure E vote, so I assume that that's the direction we're going. If we're going to be doing mixed use on the Boulevard, we will have a Measure E vote. And secondly, there was some talk about no changes from what the plan was a year ago. The plan hasn't even gone to city staff yet, and it will again have extensive community input. So we need to take the first step, and I think tonight is the night.
Thank you very much. You know, there was a question asked earlier this evening about who in this community is this going to benefit? It's been stated several times that it's going to benefit Thousand Oaks. For once, we'll be making a decision for the benefit of 128,000 people rather than for the benefit of 1,000, which we have done. We'll talk about mixed use later. If it goes to a vote of the people, we'll see if we get to get it. But as an aside, when we talk about sustainable communities, we talk about the principles of smart growth. Smart growth is preached at every level of development, every level. We consider what is one of the number one maladies of our youth? And it's obesity of our adults. It's obesity. That's because we get in our cars, we drive everywhere we go. If we have a mixed use concept, as Mr. Dow said, Mr. Doan said, my apologies, then we get people out of their cars, we get them on the streets, we get them walking. We make this a pedestrian, retail-friendly benefit for the whole community and not just a handful of people. And to reiterate again, this is an iterative process. This is a first step. We're not approving anything but a framework. And I think it shows you just how long it takes to herd cats and get them in the same direction. So I'll gladly support the motion. Mr. Fox, you have a closing comment? None, please vote.
Motion carries for one. Councilmember Bill Bildepeña dissenting.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'd like to go on to 9B. It'll be a fairly quick staff report, department report. So Mr. Mitzi, you've got it.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and members of the city council. The current Live Nation designation of exclusive profit-making promoter of contemporary attractions in the Cavalry Theater expires June 30, 2009. On March 6, 2009, the city issued a request for qualifications on RFQ for exclusive profit-making promoter of contemporary attractions for the 2009-2010 season with two options to extend for two years each. Three companies responded, Live Nation, AEG Live, and The Canyon Club. A contemporary attractions programming review committee consisting of three members of the Board of Governors, Harry Salvin, Virginia Davis, and Dr. Russ Poto, and two city staff, the city's Public Information Officer and the city's Director of Community and Cultural Services, was formed to review the proposals and interview the applicants. Harry Salvin served as chair of the committee. Harry Salvin has been a member of the Board of Governors for over 15 years and has chaired the Board of Governors Programming Committee. Mr. Salvin will present the committee's recommendation at this time. Also in attendance is Susan Rosenbluth of AEG Live, who is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Salvin. Name and city of residence, please.
Harry Salvin, Westlake Village. Mayor, city council, staff. It's showtime. We're back in the theater now. I think Lawrence Welk would have done something like one and a two and a, guess what? There's no business like show business. We, at the theater department, I call us the theater department because there's many divisions, we've reviewed and find that there's need for a change. We have, over the last 15 years, hired a company called Live Nation. Initially, they did a very commendable job, and in your packet, you'll see a breakdown of the shows that they presented over the years. They started out with 30, 32, 20. These are what I call contemporary or celebrity series type of theater programs. As of late, they've dropped down to where they're only presenting about seven or eight shows annually. Second thing that we were concerned with was the fact that they were not giving us the theater for some of the younger audiences as well as the material audiences. So we decided to make a change. We had formed a committee of five. We reviewed the various applicants, and we came to a decision where we are recommending AEG Live, which brings a professional group of promoters that we think are going to do a first-class job. They present contemporary concerts for varying audiences and ages. They now operate 13 theaters and concert clubs, and they fully understand the challenges that we have here at the Civic Arts Plaza. We highly recommend, after much discussion, we unanimously have recommended that the city council approve them to be the promoters of our contemporary theater programs. Are there any questions?
Ms. Bildepeña has a question.
Thank you. You mentioned The Canyon Club, or Mr. Mitzi mentioned The Canyon Club, which is right next door, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The Canyon, The Canyon Club applied as well?
They applied, yes.
And they're right next door?
Uh, yes.
Okay. By next door, I mean our neighbor's city, Agora Hills. Any reason why they did not fit your profile or didn't meet the requirements?
Our requirements? One, they'd be professional, experienced. And frankly, we interviewed all three applicants. We made a, with the city attorney's office, we provided a list of questions which were presented to all three, so we got standard answers, standard questions, standard replies. And with that, the committee made their decision. And frankly, it was absolutely no question. It was unanimous.
Did you think The Canyon Club was then too small to compete against AEG, perhaps? I'm just curious because I always like to hire locally, and if there was a chance, I just wonder.
Uh, very frankly, I'm not sure I should disclose this, but they were a very strong contender.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very strong.
Additional questions? Ms. Irwin?
Really quickly, Mr. Salvin, thank you again, and the other members of the Board of Governors, Mr. Mitzi and Drew for serving on the committee. And I just want to say one thing. I talked to another committee member, and they said basically that AEG just knocked your socks off, so that they are really going to be a big asset here in Thousand Oaks. And this committee member was very excited to have them coming. Thanks again.
Additional comments or questions of the speaker? Well, again, thanks a lot to you and your group. I'll call on Susan Rosenbluth now, if you have anything you want to add. Harry did it?
Yeah.
Okay. Harry, you did it.
They're great.
Okay. And Mr. Kidway is not here. He is the third speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Salvin. Questions of staff at all? None? Ms. Irwin?
I'm going to move the staff recommendation.
Questions of staff? I have a comment and a comment to address a concern that was expressed a few minutes ago, and that was the Canyon Club. I had an opportunity to speak with the owner of The Canyon Club after these RFPs were looked at, and he was very enthusiastic of our using AEG. And he said, they just came out with a much better offer than what he could. So I'll certainly support your motion. Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We will go into closed session. I'll please Ms. Albano, who's going to announce it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public, council will be going into closed session concerning anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subsection C1 case. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's resume the evening's business. And what we're going to get on to now is 10A. Mr. Adams?
Good evening. Good evening, city council. Tonight, I will be presenting the draft fiscal year 2009 through 2011 budget. All right, here's tonight's agenda for the draft budget. It is a study session, and after staff's riveting presentation, we will be available for questions. Each department head is available to answer questions related to their own budgets. I did want to comment that this is only a study session. Council will not be adopting the budget tonight, but council will be providing feedback for staff in the final presentation and development of the budget for 2009 through 2011. Here are a few points that I wanted to make about the draft budget in tonight's study session. Financial planning has been critical for the city. The city's financial strategic plan update has allowed the city to be proactive in addressing declining revenues. Adherence, staff has, or we are recommending adherence to city council financial policies. The 2007, 2009- We implement performance measures and use those to monitor and evaluate performance. And finally, we do annual reporting of both the goals and the finances. This is the citywide budget summary. To note at the bottom, this budget currently is proposed to have $223.6 million in the first year and $225 million in the second year. We have multiple funds, and we try to categorize them in six categories for Council to show you the significance and the context for each area. General fund appropriations are over $70 million. The library fund is a little over $9 million. We have enterprise funds that are self-supporting. This includes water, wastewater, transportation, solid waste, golf course, and theaters fund, which represents almost $70 million in the first year and $77 in the second year. And then we have special revenue funds, capital and debt service funds, and redevelopment agency at $24 million. The pie chart shows a little more detail for fiscal year '09. Please note that the general fund is 32% of the total budget. This is a municipal corporation that provides a wide range of services, everything from wastewater services or sewer all the way to a golf course. This is the pie chart showing allocations for 2010, 2011 at $25.8 million. Part of the budget process, and when I say comprehensive, it's extremely in detail, and we start back at the financial strategic plan that we started back in 2007, and it ends, or at least it comes up to this point at the study session, which is May 5, 2009. Financial strategic plan. Just to recall, Council gave direction in 2007 at the adoption of the last budget that City staff should update the financial strategic plan, and this is an update to the 2005 strategic plan. Council over the last eighteen months has given ten presentations on various components of the financial strategic plan. I do want to note, in January of 2009, which was our last presentation, the model forecasted a $3.2 million general fund gap and a $4.2 million gap in the second year. Since that point, we have done new revised revenue estimates, and projected revenues went down another $2.8 million and $3 million in the second year. $2.8 million is representative of sales tax declines, further sales tax declines from $25 million to $23 million, and the other .8 is miscellaneous reductions in other areas. Capital improvement budget. The study session was held on April the 7th. This budget does incorporate those projected capital projects. It did go to Plan Commission on April 27th for concurrence with the general plan. Just to highlight, for both years, we have a hundred projects at a total of $108 million. This is in comparison to 141 projects in the prior-to-year budget. The proposed capital program will be brought to you in June on the 9th with the operating budget. For CIP, fiscal year 2009, 2010, it was a total of $53.4 million. This shows the different components in different areas. Transportation and traffic is the largest area at $17.2 million. And for 2010, 2011, total budget is $54.9 million for CIP. Citywide user fees. Another component of the budget process, the public hearing and adoption was on April 21st. Further fees to be reviewed include building and safety, as we noted on that presentation. Theaters fee are pending per the cultural arts report. Affordable housing fees, you heard tonight and made adjustments to those fees. And then finally, water and wastewater fees will be adjusted as the financial plans are completed. Just a simple note, if fees are not at full cost recovery, as per Council policy, the difference is paid by general tax revenues, and this is important to remember, because if we do reduce fees or not charge full cost recovery, it does come from general taxes like sales tax and property tax. And just to highlight, user fees citywide includes water, wastewater, $54 million of the $170-plus million that we receive annually in revenue. City Council goal-setting, just a quick highlight, February 24th it took place. This is where you reaffirmed your ten broad citywide goals. You adopted ten priorities. This budget is reflective of those priorities and resources have been allocated accordingly, and thus, the budget becomes a policy document. All right. Here's the meat. We're going to talk a little about the operating budget for fiscal year 2009, 2010, and 2010 to 2011. Budget process really started in February after the financial strategic plan was presented in January. Budget development took place in March and April, and the study session tonight. Adoption of the budget will take place on June 9th, which is less than a month away, or a little over a month away. The operating budget document, which is 288 pages and attachment one, a lot of numbers, a lot of narrative on each of the programs. The budget does provide a citywide summary. It provides detailed fund information and department budgets. We spend a few minutes on the various funds for a highlight, and then I'm going to go into the general fund more in detail. Just to list all the different funds, I think I showed this on a previous pie chart, but here are the different areas that we'll cover, and this is the citywide. Citywide, $223 million for revenues. That's made up of $173.9 million in operating revenues, $7.3 million in transfers in, and $42.3 million in use of reserves. As you note on the next page, which says uses or appropriations, operating appropriations are $145, capital is $53.4 million. Remember that Council's policy is to use reserves to fund capital projects, and so capital is well in excess of the reserves being used. Debt service is $17 million and transfers out $7 million, for a total of $223. For 2010, 2011, similar, a little bit of an increase, up to $225 million. Revenues are $178, transfers in $6.7, and capital, again, exceeds the use of reserves. We spend several slides on the general fund. I'm going to go through both revenues and expenditures, specifically the revenues that have significant changes. Talked earlier that the general fund is approximately a third of the citywide budget. In the first year, 2009, 2010, total uses or sources, the $72.5 million. This includes $64 million of operating revenue, $2 million in transfers in and reserves, use of reserves of currently proposed is $6.5 million. Operating expenditures are $64.4 million, transfers in or transfers out are $4.2, and capital is $3.8, for a total of $72.5. And for the second year, with an increase up to $73.8 for both uses and sources. Here's the detail for each of the major revenue sources. I've included projected '08-'09 revenue budget that was provided to City Council in June, or in January of 2009. This is to reflect the presentation that was done on the FSP. This is not what was originally adopted in 2007, nor was this, these, the numbers revised in July of 2008. This is a further, these represented numbers that were as current in January of 2009. And so, in looking at 2008, or '09, '10, we are showing a decline of $2.0, or $1.8 million. Taxes and fees have the most significant decrease. License and permits, we're building safety permits are, have a decline as well. Use of money and property, as you can imagine, interest rates have declined, and we're projecting lower interest earnings. All the other categories have minor increases. Reimbursements are lower, and transfers in are a little lower as well. Here is general fund revenues by year. What's important is to see 2007, where we come down to $74.2 million. That was the high. Last year, 2008, we went down to $72.2, and currently, on the other side of the line is where we project 2009, 2010, and 2011. For this year, we're hoping to be at $67.8, and then we go down 2010 to $66 million, which was the low. That is a, if you look over the last two years, that's a $6 million difference, or an $8 million over the last three years. General fund revenues, $66 million total. As noted, taxes and franchise fees are the largest at 58%. This includes sales tax, property tax, TOT, franchise fees, and 58%, and then the others as well. Excellent. Here's fiscal year 2010, 11. General taxes and franchise fees increased to 60%. This is mainly attributed to the proposed increase in franchise fees and the recovery of sales tax in late 2010. Let me spend a few minutes just going into a little detail on each of the revenues to talk about our assumptions and some of our projections. Property tax currently is projected at 2% growth. This is Prop 13 minimums. The one concern we do have is Prop 8 appeals. These are the reassessments that are done at the county level after they update the rolls as of January. The concern here is that the county at this point hasn't published those numbers, don't expect to publish or change in assessed valuation until July. It's very reasonable that those Prop 8 appeals would push our growth down. We won't know that until July, and at that point, we'll come back to City Council. Sales tax, in this budget, is approximately 36%. In prior budgets, it's been as high as 42%. Current forecast for next year is $23 million, and the second year is $24. We do expect some recovery. Right now, we're expecting for this year $24.6 million, so we are seeing a decline over the next year and hopefully for a change in the second year. Transient occupancy tax, there has been a change, projected about 9% down to $2.5 million, but we do anticipate some increase in the second year. Franchise fees. The city is currently in negotiations with the trash holler for exclusive franchise rights. The city is proposing an increase to the franchise fee from 5% to 8%. This would be effective at the first year. Franchise fees are then expected to increase $550,000 annually, and so we do have an increase half in year one and for the full amount in year two. For property transfer fee, I thought it was important that, right now, we're budgeting for $550,000. When you go back and look at our revenue trends, back in 2006, that number was $1.3 million, so we've seen a decline over three years of $800,000. Of course, this is based on the number of sales in homes. And finally, motor vehicle license fee is projected at 2% growth. This does track with property tax, and if property tax is reduced, NVIL will be as well. Business license is no increase in revenues. We have not seen any growth over the last two years in business license. Building and safety fees, we've seen a significant reduction since 2007. We've seen a 45% reduction, which is from $3.6 million down to $1.9. Just from January, our projections have decreased 10%. And then, as noted earlier, I talked about interest income is projected to be lower because of our rate of return is going down. Here's a line graph of sales tax. The top, the highest that we've ever been in actual sales tax is $28.7 million, and we are projecting for next year $23 million. That's a $5.7 million decline over the past three years. Talked a little about building and safety. This shows a 10-year trend on building and safety. Everything on to the right of the line is projected revenues. Certainly, you see the high back in 2001, but there have been declines since then in major categories. And just to talk about revenues, there's also permits that are being processed. This is the permit history of permits processed, and you can see this goes through year-to-date, which is as of April, where we are as far as permits processed from '97 through 2009, which has gone from about $13,000 down to about $5,000 annually. We spent a few minutes on expenditures. This is the makeup of our expenditures, salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, and capital improvement projects. Here's a brief summary. Salary and benefits is $31.5 million in the first year and $32 million in the second year. MNO is $7.6 and $7.8. Police contract, which is part of the MNO part of the budget, I break it out just to give you an idea of what the projections are. And then capital improvement is $3.8 and $3.8, and then transfers to other funds, $4.2 and $3.7 million, for a total of $72.5 in the first year. General fund operation allocation. Salary and benefits, this does not include capital. Salary and benefits are 46%, where police costs are 37%. And in the second year, salary and benefits at 46 and police cost at 38%. Here are the general fund operating expenditures by major categories. The first, the first bar, or the first part of the bar is salary and benefits. Second part is police costs, and the third is MNO. MNO is a very small portion. It's less than 5% of the total budget. In this category, a lot of it's not discretionary, everything from utilities to other type of maintenance items. Let me spend a few minutes on the salary and benefit component of the general fund operating budget. We talked a little earlier on how our gap, or at least our revenues, have significantly declined. Several things have occurred to try to make sure that we try to maintain as close to balanced budget as possible, including the hiring freeze. The 2009, 2010, and 2010, 2011 general fund salary budget includes salary adjustments and compliance with the MOUs for the employees. It also includes 28 unfunded positions. This 28 unfunded positions has been achieved by maintaining the hiring freeze and then the retirement incentives. As of, as of May 1st, there were 17 retirements as part of the incentive, and so we currently have 28 unfunded positions. The budget may come back for the adoption with a little less, or a little more than that because we had two that were not included in this proposed draft. The salary budget also does not include any significant increases for CalPERS. We certainly have heard about the investment returns that CalPERS has received over the past nine months. Those losses, if any, will be reflective in our 2011, 2012 rates, which is outside of this budget cycle. Also, to achieve as close to balanced- Everything from utilities to other type of maintenance items. Let me spend a few minutes on the salary and benefit component of the general fund operating budget. We talked a little earlier on how our gap, or at least our revenues, have significantly declined. Several things have occurred to try to make sure that we try to maintain as close to balanced budget as possible, including the hiring freeze. The two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand ten, two thousand eleven general fund salary budget includes salary adjustments and compliance with the MOUs for the employees. It also includes twenty-eight unfunded positions. This twenty-eight unfunded positions has been achieved by maintaining the hiring freeze and then the retirement incentives. As of, as of May first, there were seventeen retirements, retirements as part of the incentive. And so, we currently have twenty-eight unfunded positions. The budget may come back for the adoption with a little less or a little more than that because we had two that were not included in this proposed draft. The salary budget also does not include any significant increases for CalPERS. We certainly have heard about the, the investment returns that CalPERS has received over the past nine months. Those losses, if any, will be reflective in our two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve rates, which is outside of this budget cycle. Also, to achieve as close to balanced budget as possible, city reduced our workers' comp rate, which is a savings of four hundred thousand annually. We are underfilling, or some positions are being underfilled and are budget appropriately. And then transfers and reassignments. One of the things, as we have vacancies and we have unfunded positions, certain responsibilities have moved, been moved around based on workload. I think a good example might be animal control, which used to be in public works and now being transferred over to community development. And those are the type of things that staff is doing to try to move around workload where there is the need to have staffing filling certain positions. This is a funded position history. We start back at fiscal year oh seven, oh, oh seven, oh eight, which was the first year of the current two-year budget. City Council approved authorized positions or funding for positions at four hundred and eighty-three. This does not include police or, or public safety. In fiscal year oh eight, oh nine, we had made adjustments to the salary budget back last July, where Council unfroze and did not, and took away funding for eleven positions. And so you see that reduction of eleven positions. And then for this proposed year of oh nine, ten, because of the continued hiring freeze and retirements, we're seeing a reduction of thirteen positions. And in the second year, another reduction of seven positions. So that's a total citywide of thirty-one positions, twenty-eight are in the general fund and library funds. MNO. I sort of mentioned that MNO represents about fifteen percent of the operating budget. There is some discretionary funding and some non-discretionary funding. One of the one reductions that we made was fixed asset replacement, or we reduced funding for fixed asset replacement by twenty-five percent, which is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also, street sweeping. Part of the franchise agreement negotiations is that the city's requesting that the trash holler provides street sweeping citywide. This would provide an annual savings of six hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand for the two-year budget. Other notable discretion, reductions in discretionary MNO, just to give you a flavor of the type of stuff that we've done. Eliminate the employee picnic, which was scheduled for the first year. We're eliminating the boards and commissions gala event, and we're eliminating the state lobbyist contract. And there's several others, but I just didn't highlight them all. Fiscal, I'm going to talk a few minutes about police department budget for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. The projected contract increase for two thousand nine is three percent, and in the second year, it's five percent. These numbers currently are coming tentatively from the contract law officer, the people who come up with the contract rates. The anticipation of a higher rate in the second year is because of the retirement fund and potential increases to retirement costs. This draft budget has twenty-six million in the first year and twenty-seven point two million in the second year. Prior to, after the adopt, or after the printing of the draft budget, we are proposing a two percent reduction with net funding increases of two point, or two hundred and fifty thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand. The goal, the targeted goal for public safety or police was two percent. And at the point which we were developing the budget and trying to finalize the draft budget, we had not identified the areas. And police was doing some analysis to make recommendations on where to make those reductions. We talk about the increases that we're anticipating in the contract rates, three and five percent. We're asking for a proposed reduction of two percent, which would allow for a net increase in public safety, but it's not at the full contract rates. And then this, in July of two thousand eight, the hit-and-run officer was frozen because it was unfilled, and that was part of the gap closing for last year. That position is still unfunded, and we're pending R of funding, which was provided at a date to the City Council last council meeting. Simply just, this graph simply shows the general fund expenditures in relation to total police costs. This one shows police expenditures for sales tax revenues from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand eleven. And the line, everything to the right of the line is the projection. Everything left is actual. As you can see, police expenditures have been well above, or well below, sales tax for the past ten years, based on projected police expenditures in next year's budget. And in the following budget, sales tax will be less than police expenditures. It's significant because sales taxes are largest single revenue source, and we're highly dependent on sales tax. On top of salaries, police costs, and MNO, this, the general fund provides support for several other funds, including the library fund. Here, we show transfers. As you can see, the city's general fund provides over two million dollars in annual support to the library. Other key points, there is no subsidy for the theaters fund. I think that's important. That was a council goal back in two thousand seven. And the second point I want to make is that currently, we do include a hundred thousand dollar transfer to the open space fund from the general fund. General fund summary. At the beginning, I talked about the use of six point five million dollars in reserves and five point eight in the second year of reserves. When we talk about an operating gap, City Council policy allows us to use one-time revenues for one-time expenses, including capital. And so I say that we're going to use six point five or five point eight million in revenues or in reserves. That's the starting point. And so when we talk about an operational gap, we, we take away both the general fund and library fund, CIP. Second one we're taking away is the one-time expenditure for the retirement incentive and buyouts. And then the third one is, that was not included in the budget, is the five hundred thousand dollar reduction in police costs. And so that's how we've gotten to the one million dollar operating gap currently in this draft budget. Okay? Here's some short time, or I shouldn't say short time, short-term gap measures that we've already implemented. This is a summary of the measures that we've included in the draft budget. I've talked about each one of them on different occasions. These measures have significantly helped us close the general fund gap. Here's some additional short-term gap measures that are available and staff is considering but are not included in the, in the draft budget. City Council can provide some direction to staff if these measures should be reviewed and proposed in the final budget. I do want to highlight a couple of them. This is the open space transfer with a hundred thousand I talked about at the top. Reduce the annual community grants. These are the, both the sports endowment, the social service grants and community endowment grants. Look at CRPD support if needed. And then there's other things that we call opportunity costs. Not that we can identify specific savings, but that as we get leaner in staffing, that a lot of energy is spent on certain areas. And we talk about the commissions and boards, certainly, community programs like the community cleanup day, and even reduction of TOTV coverage outside of the City Council on planning meetings. And then, and then the last short-term gap measures that's our, that will be available to council is the use of five, of the five percent emergency contingency reserve. Talked about the short-term gaps or short-term gap closing strategies. These are the long-term. These are things that we certainly won't be able to implement for this two-year budget, but need to be considered as we go through the next two years in development of the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budgets. I didn't mention it a lot in the presentation, or I haven't mentioned it at all, but where possible, the bag recommendations that were short-term were implemented and included in the budget. This is part of the budget attachment two, and it starts on page ninety-three of the, of the agenda packet. Of special note, city is partnering with CRPD and KNEO Unified to look at the funding options. And this is to, this will be critical as the city needs to identify community support for community services. And then, I just want to, the last bullet point is, the goal of any long-term strategy is to gain financial independence from the state and feds. And I think that that's pretty relevant at this point, which we expect the state to be coming after the city for additional funding. Use of five percent emergency contingency reserve. Council policy, which is a hundred percent in compliance at this point, we have a fifteen percent working capital reserve, which is representative of fourteen million dollars, and we have a five percent emergency contingency reserve of four point seven. This is eighteen point seven million dollars that the city has in reserves. If City Council approved the use of emergency reserves to maintain current services at two million, this would only represent eleven percent of the reserves. And the city's top priority would be to replenish those reserves over the next coming I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the other funds. I may briefly go through those. I may highlight the most significant funds that have impacts on the general fund. For the library fund, clearly, there are staffing reductions going down from sixty-nine down to six, or sixty-nine to sixty-one. The library revenue budget does include anticipation of Ventura County participation at a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then the general fund subsidy, as, as noted earlier, is two point six and two point one million respectively. Stormwater and flood control budget. The budget does not include the new cost for the storm, the new stormwater permit. At this point, staff has not been able to project those costs, and so, and thus, those costs are not included. We are budgeting affluent water sales into the fund to help offset any general fund subsidy. The current general fund subsidy is just about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars Capital projects. Reason why this is important is because this is mostly where developer funds go to to maintain and improve infrastructure. We've seen a significant reduction developer fee revenue, which will impact our infrastructure and us maintaining it. And then we have future concerns specifically with various projects, including the windy road interchange project. This graph is, I know it's very colorful. This represents all the different developer fees that we receive. I think what's important is, is that if you look from fiscal year oh three down to fiscal year oh nine, we've had a close to seventy percent reduction in developer fees. Right now, we're projecting just over a million dollars next year. This is from a high of almost, above three point five. All right. Water and wastewater. I think we've heard that the water fund and the cost for water will be going up substantially, up to forty percent over the next two years. And both the water fund and wastewater fund use reserves in order to fund capital projects. Theater fund. In order to get theater fund within two hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand over the two-year period, we are recommending postponing deferred maintenance of over four hundred and fifty thousand for the two-year budget. The theater fund, based on the current revenue projections and the current expenditure projections, will have operating deficits in both years. The first year's three hundred and thirty-four, and the second year's one hundred thousand. Staff will use or is recommending the use of reserves for the theaters fund. Other funds, solid waste, transportation, golf course. All, for solid waste, we do see a use of reserves for projects. Transportation fund, three point two million in the first year, three point six in the second year. Golf course is using reserves for capital projects. And the redevelopment agency, which has an annual budget above twenty-four million, will be putting money into reserves for future projects. Future challenges. State of California is the first one. Certainly, we've heard recently that the governor, if the propositions do not pass, will be implementing Prop one A and potential takeaway of city revenues to help with their fiscal crisis, which we just heard about today. The economy, there is continued impact on revenues, and that is continuing concern. We're hoping that revenues will stabilize, and our challenge is, is that we have increasing expenditures. And so we're hoping that revenues will rebound to help us address those increasing expenditures. Staffing levels and service deliveries, as staffing levels potentially go down based on the hiring freezes, there's the potential of service reductions. And I talk about a few others. CalPERS investments won't hit us until the third year, and that is a concern. New stormwater permit. We talked about our, this current budget does not include any, any expenditures or any budget for the potential cost of implementing the new permit. In summary, general fund shortfall currently, based on the draft budget, is a million, roughly a million dollars each year. We had some recommendations or areas that we were going to look at to close the gap. The library fund will get support from the general fund of two point six and two point one million dollars. The theaters, we are recommending at this point to use reserves to fund their deficit. And for the water fund, of course, is increase in water rates. And that concludes our presentation. And staff's recommendations are above. And we're available for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was sort of riveting. It was not bad.
I did my best with seventy-five slides. I apologize.
You did quite well. Questions of staff, Ms. Irwin?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, one of the employee suggestions was to sell excess land, and I was kind of curious about what the feasibility is of selling the land that we had designated for the RV storage site. And the reason is, you know, we're, we're looking at what are the services that the city really wants to provide? And you look, does the city really want to be in the horse business? That ended up costing us a lot of money. Do we really want to be in the RV business? And I know there's a big indoor RV storage area that I don't think is completely filled. I don't see a lot of people clamoring for that RV storage. And, and so it was just kind of, what is the assessed value of that land? And have you looked at all about potentially selling it to fill a gap?
I, I think in the staff report, we note that as a long-term, any selling of any land is a long-term strategy. Certainly, we're in the midst of going through and evaluating that specific property and coming back to council with the proposal. If I'm not mistaken, I think the appraisals that were back in two thousand and five were a little above two million, two point five million dollars. You know, from, you know, from a finance side, you know, I don't know if we, you know, as far as selling something for a one-time revenue source to fund operations, you know, we might not recommend. But certainly, that's overall, as far as selling property, is really a long-term goal or a long-term strategy to review.
I was also looking at all the staff time that we've spent so far in the last four years, and we're still back at square one on that. You mentioned the suspension of Prop one A, and I heard that it was potentially two billion dollars. Do you have an estimate of how much of a hit that would be for us?
There's various components. The one, the first one is, is a certain percentage of property tax, which is the one that I think is really the big one. I think it's up to ten percent or eight percent of property tax. Luckily, we are a low property tax city, and so ten percent of six mil, six million would be under six hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, again, anyway, we don't know. And I, at this point, we just heard the news in the last, last twelve hours.
I wouldn't really say luckily we're a low property tax city. Maybe luckily in this instance, we're a low property tax city. The other, I, also the question on property tax, the assessor is expecting, I think, county-wide a four or five percent decrease in property tax, and you're projecting two percent increase. And, and has that two percent increase, does that take into account the four or five percent decrease that? Because I, I know that we had, that, that, you know, our property taxers are, for the most part, lower than the assessed values because we don't have that many new homes.
Yeah. I, let me, you know, the, the draft budget and our projections... Let me, you know, the draft budget and our projections are based on several weeks ago. I personally talked to a deputy assessor with the county last Thursday and Friday, in which they gave me the 4% to 5% countywide. They cannot provide any detail for us for our agency. If you look at past trends, you know, usually we're higher than the average as far as increases in assessed valuation. We haven't had the development that Oxnard, or Simi Valley, or Moore Park, or even Camarillo have had over the last few years. They are, the assessor, as I understand, is going back to 2002 property values. And so approximately 30% of the residential property has transferred hands during that seven-year period. So I sort of highlighted that. I don't necessarily want to, you know, forecast that we'll have an actual 4% negative growth at this point. And again, it's something that we're aware of, and we just need to monitor it as we get the actual information. And it would be the same thing with sales tax. I think one of the recommendations, at least the ongoing strategies, is to try to manage these declines on a quarterly basis. I mean, I think the hiring freeze has helped us, and we would continue to do that. And so I think as we see these numbers change, you know, that we have to manage it that way.
And then talking about the hiring freeze, you said you had 17 positions, that 17 people that took advantage of the retirement incentive program.
Correct.
And I saw that one of the employee's suggestions was to lower the number of years of service for the incentive program to 10 years. Are you looking for, I mean, are you right at the edge of how many frozen positions you can have? Or are you looking for additional retirements?
At this point, we're not recommending that we change the incentive. I mean, it was good through May 1st. I think that our, we said 20 was the max we would want to do. We got 17, which is pretty close. And I think that if we reduce it anymore, there is some concern that, you know, 20% is about 5% of our workforce. And we didn't want to get, we don't want to get, have too many people leave at one time. And so at this point, we're fine with the 17, and hopefully the continuing selective hiring freeze will help us.
Okay. And then my last question is about police costs. So I don't know.
Yes. Police?
I see that you have to cut $500,000 from your budget. And one of the things Ms. Hong mentioned when I saw her last week is that you're looking at removing a roaming car. Is that correct?
The car that, to reach that 2% goal set by staff, is called the Nine-Robber Car. It came on in 2002. It's an extra car. It's not assigned to a beat. It's a car that can go throughout the city, backing up other units.
Okay. My, you know, one of the, obviously, we don't know too much about the police business, but I know that one of the measures we have, that was very important to the council, is response time. And it just seems to me that something like a roving car would directly affect response time, as there might be other positions that are not as direct, you know, as somebody that's out on the street.
One of the impacts, probably the one we would be most concerned about, would be response times. Because of the process of comstat that has come along in the last few years, every quarter we review our stats in the city to see any types of crime trends, one of those stats that we get is response times. So it's very easy for us to track, to see if we remove this car, we'll know within a quarter if we're starting to experience issues with response times. In talking with my predecessor and the Assistant Chief, Captain Pentis, Captain Watlington in Investigations, and all our supervisors, we've come to the conclusion that, looking at all the various units and bureaus, that this would have the least impact on our delivery of services. It would mean more work for, not only patrol to pick up the slack, but all the traffic units out there, we have investigators out in the field, we have the crime prevention officers out in the field, we have our cops unit out in the field. If a call comes out, it wouldn't necessarily be the closest patrol unit that would have to respond. It would be the closest officer that would have to respond.
Well, certainly, it is, you know, you guys are the experts. That seems to me that it would, like I said, affect response times, and that's something that we're directly concerned with. But at the very minimum, I think that it would be a good idea to let us know what the current response times are, and one quarter or six months later, come back to us. And if response times have really been affected by removing that car off the street, then I hope that you have another solution for finding those cuts.
Let me add some additional information. In the beats that we have in the city of Thousand Oaks, basically, we have two beats in the west area of the city, Newbury Park, the north end of the city, and the east end of the city, the center of Thousand Oaks, and over towards the West Lake. Each one of those areas has one cover car assigned. Now, this Rover car that we're talking about, when we look at having to do a reduction, we look at what is going to be the least impact on delivery of services. The industry standard for response times to emergency calls is five minutes. We're under that. We're at 4.74. It's been down as low as 4.54, up to 4.8, 4.85. So we constantly look at that. And as the chief was talking about, there's other ways to respond to calls. We're always concerned about areas such as the Dos Quientos community, the extreme west end, it's a long drive time, the northeast area of West Lake and the North Ranch area. So we can consistently monitor that, because we want to keep under the industry standard. So we're well aware of that part of it. And looking at, we're not taking a cover car away from a particular area. And what I mean by that, if we have, use Newbury Park as an example, if we have the Nine Charles car, which is in Newbury Park, and the Nine Henry car, if one is, has an arrest and may be taking the arrest to the East Valley Jail, or possibly Ventura, we have one car there. Now, we have the cover car for that, which is the Nine Ocean. So we still have that cover car. We still have the same amount of cars. We look at this Rover car in case one of those cars had to leave to back up another car within the city. Now, how can we respond quickly to that emergency call? That's what we monitor, not only quarterly, but monthly. I look at those times and report to the chief. So although it's an impact, we think at this point, it's the, if we're going to make a reduction, that's the most viable, where we won't lose the delivery of service, as long as we're maintaining, under the industry standard of emergency response.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Chleb?
Thank you. Well, Captain Pentis and the chief are up there. Just a question along that line. What, your authorized complement of VIPs at this point? Where are you?
On patrol. We have about 80, in the mid-80s, total VIPs. Half of them do patrol. The other half are stationed either at East Valley Station or at the resource centers.
Okay. What's your authorized strength? Is there a cap?
No, there's no cap at this time.
Okay. The thing I'm looking at is the, your work and the exceptional job that's been done at relieving, relieving active beat cars from more routine, mundane calls with the use of the VIP program. And so I'm thinking, as those numbers go up, is, are you realizing, are you realizing an expansion of available hours from the beat cars?
In the last comstat, that actually was reflected in the last comstat stats. The calls for service for the quarter, 2009 versus 2008, the first quarter, calls for service went down, but officer-initiated stops and observations went up. And that would be a reflection of the VIPs giving our officers more patrol time.
Availability.
Exactly.
Greater availability. One piece that factors into this, one of the highest calls that we have experienced, at least historically, and I assume that's continuing, are vehicle-related parking, neighborhood nuisance, high neighborhood quality issues. But are you able now to maintain the cadet force at a level? Or are we still experiencing the problem we've had for a long time at keeping those numbers up?
We currently have, and what you're speaking of, we had four or five of our cadets. Typically, the cadet program, it's young people who want to get into law enforcement as a career. We had four or five get hired at one time, so it's difficult to rehire some of the young people with college schedules and that type of thing. And we do have a full complement of our cadets. The other part of, just to digress just for a second on your question, implementing last year, when we started the school resource officer program, that reduced calls for service greatly. When we look at the top 10 calls for service in the city, the schools were always in that top group. But by having an officer at that school, that gave officers more patrol time as well. When you're talking about some of these parking issues, with the new community mediation program, with the cadets at full strength, that alleviates some of those issues as well. And again, gives patrol officers more time to do proactive work.
You just mentioned two more that I was going to get into. But the point behind all of this is that you're doing an exceptional job of utilizing alternative assets, all of which go to enhance the bottom line on available police hours on the street. And I assume that figured into your discussion for this, the ability to relieve this roving car. I understand that we can expect within not-too-distant future, a relatively comprehensive parking, citywide parking program that's been working with the police, Public Works, city attorney, and everybody. Is that coming at us in the near future?
And do you have the details?
We have a public meeting scheduled for May 20th, a joint public hearing between Public Works and the Police Department.
Okay. Because from the information that I'm receiving, with the economy, we're getting many, many more calls of people who are abandoning RV storage, paid storage, and moving those types of vehicles onto streets, again, causing more quality-of-life issues, residential irritation issues that are requiring service. And when we talked briefly about, there was a brief discussion about the property in Newbury Park, I got to remember, that was part of a bigger program. That was always intended, although it hasn't made it yet, that if we do get a program where we are able to enhance the enforcement efforts to make people comply and get those things off the street, we have to have someplace for them to go. We have to have an alternative to offer. A strong enforcement program with no alternative isn't much of an alternative. That's fine, gentlemen. I appreciate that. It's just this mosaic of police coverage and asset coverage, there are so many more pieces to it now than there has been historically. And I appreciate what it would take for you to go through and identify the release of a unit. So that's not an easy decision to make. But I also would remind all of us that this is one community that historically, during the budget cycle, has asked the senior police administrator after the conclusion of the request, if there was anything else they needed. And the city has tried very hard to provide that across the equipment and personnel spectrum. So anyhow, thank you for the job you do.
If I may comment?
Yes, please.
You know, speaking historically, the city really has put their money where their mouth is, in the enforcement side, but also on the education and the program side. And this is where we should be able to have more proactive patrol time, based on those programs, the money that was spent on these programs and on education. You know, I don't want to have as my legacy to be the first chief of police who's diminishing the enforcement side. But I have faith, and my management and my supervisors have faith, that we can lose this roving car and not diminish services.
Well, let me ask you one other quick question with that. And I want to phrase, I want to phrase this appropriately. I don't want to put you on the spot. But you mentioned arrests to the East County Jail facility on Olson Road, and transportation to the Central Jail on Victorian Ventura. Do we have now, and I've kind of lost track of it, sufficient assets to man the East County Jail at a level that reduces, that reduces the trips to the Central Jail in Ventura?
East Valley Jail, which is actually run by our detention services, not by patrol services, is fully functioning. It's working at its maximum efficiency, which of course, not only helps the Thousand Oaks Police Department, but Moore Park and the CHP and Simi Valley Police Department in not having to transport prisoners all the way down to the government center at 800 South Victoria in Ventura. So right now, that East Valley Station is up and running at full tilt.
Well, that's where I wanted to go with that, because I know when it was reopened, it was open in increments with the goal of expanding it to full operation. Because every time, I think we're all painfully aware, that every time there's a physical arrest that requires incarceration, you can't release on a citation, it's a minimum, minimum two hours lost, and usually three to four hours lost in transporting to the Central Jail. And those are lost on-street enforcement hours. So, okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. I wanted to go back for a minute. John?
Yes, sir.
In your discussions and the work on the, by the way, the preliminary document is excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's, it was riveting.
Thank you.
And the excitement of the presentation was the only thing that surpassed the quality of the document.
I try my best.
The hiring freeze, the capture, or the enhancement of retirements, all of those things that are going into this, into the actual workforce, it would seem to me that at some point, there's a point of diminishing return from a service level. You cut so far, but when you're getting there, there would be a gray area of what I would describe as employee anxiety. As we look in the field of the cities in Ventura County, we were fortunate because of the, we didn't have a major Lehman Brothers loss. We didn't have a major investment loss. And we have tried very carefully to strategically, on a regular basis, watch, be aware, adjust, et cetera. But the employees that are impacted by this, the anxiety with them has got to be increasing. And so have you looked at, or would you look at, some type of a system where you get to the, whatever that line is, whatever that critical point is, where it's really not practical, you're cutting into pure bone with every one of the measures that reduces workforce, either through anticipation of the employees, or actual loss and a reduction in services, that perhaps we could borrow an amount of our reserves and categorize it as an employee stabilization fund for a period of years, whether that be one, two, three, four, so many years, anticipating that this current financial situation that we're in is going, we believe that it's going to turn around. We're hoping the end of this year, we assume within the next couple of years. Would you look at such a thing as Would you look at such a thing as trying to identify that perhaps if we borrowed an amount of money from the reserve fund, the pool reserve fund, and release so much of it, or address so much of it per year solely for the purpose of stabilizing
Our workforce.
The workforce and reducing the workforce anxiety factor?
Right. At this point, and let me just talk about a few things, I think your employees are very proud of the jobs that they do every day, and I think that they
And so are we.
And have stepped up to really do more with less, and I think that it's been clear from the city manager that we will do whatever to avoid layoffs, and he has some expectations of staff to step up. The brainstorming action group is a perfect example of coming up with identified savings and to take certain actions. I think at this point, I think each department is looking at their own departments, and as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to shift staff around to where the services are the most needed, and looking at workloads. I mean, we talked a little about, a little about building and safety and some of the workload that might have decreased there. On top of just transferring responsibilities, we have some employees that have moved over to other areas, specifically in code compliance assist and business license, auditing and some compliance aspects, so, you know, as we talk about, some workload has decreased, others have increased, and I think we're trying to shift staff around accordingly, and I think we've had staff and your employees have stepped up to accomplish that. At this point, you know, overall, 5%, certainly, you know, we have to make decisions at the department level, what's important, and I think that's what we're doing now, and it's something that we can consider as we see revenues that may go down, and if we significantly see impacts of service delivery over the next year, I think that would be a good recommendation to come back with.
Well, in conclusion, it's certainly something that I, as 20% of this body, would certainly look favorably on, because we are very proud of the service we give, of the people that we have that work for this city that give that service.
Right.
And anything that reduces anxiety and stabilizes that works to the total overall advantage of the residents of the community, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Druton, this is Bill D'Uffignia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I also would like to thank you for a presentation that I didn't find riveting, rather disturbing, but quite disturbing as a matter of fact, but it is what it is, so now we have to deal with it. The question I have, first of all, is as I was looking at the City of Thousand Oaks redevelopment agency draft operating budget, I saw the expenses per department, but did not see the number of employees in each department. Do you happen to have that number now?
No, I do not have it based on department, and, you know, we sort of highlighted that currently we are proposing not to fund 28 positions in general fund and the library fund. And part of that is, is because, as you can imagine, some of the retirements that are going to occur that make up some of that, we're not exactly sure exactly who will fill those positions, and so a good example is we might have a retirement, I'll just throw out a department, Public Works, and there might be someone in community development who's interested in that position. And our commitment to city council was, when we offered this retirement incentive, that we would freeze a position equal to the number of retirements we get, and so the reason why you don't see it based on department is, is because there is some anticipation that as retirements occur, that the filling of these positions might come from other departments, and so we didn't get into that in this draft. I mean, this draft has assumptions, and that does include the 28 unfunded positions. When we get to the adopted, we will do our best to identify those per department.
Let me clarify, when we come back in June with the public hearing with the proposed budget document, we will delineate by department
Correct.
And by funds, so.
Correct.
And it's normal that we do it this way, but when we do come back, it'll be fully delineated.
Yeah, and part of it, we were stretched to get this budget to you, this draft budget today, I mean, we, with the changing revenues and things have been so dynamic over the last month, it was difficult to get this and to do position counts and try to project that would have been even more difficult.
Thank you. The reason I'm asking, I was looking at page 20, which is the general fund economic development, under the city manager's tag here, and I'm looking at salaries and benefits of approximately $200,000, and I'm wondering whether that is, how many persons that would be?
There's more than one FTE to that allocation. When we go into, when we go at the reporting division levels, we will show you how many FTEs are funded when we do the adopted budget. This is a good example where we could have percentages of people, it could be more than one.
Okay.
So, I don't have that number in front of me.
Could be one or could be two.
What?
Could be one or could be two persons.
It could be 1.1 as well, 1.2, because we do allocate based on support and stuff like that.
Okay. Then also under the city manager, I see an amount of $7 million, did we find out what that $7 million is?
Yeah, you know, as, that is carryover, or what we consider carryover from projects, that number is made up of two significant items, which is the CLU pool funding that was funded in this year, and then the allocation of $5 million for Lane Ranch that was done two years ago. So that number includes those, because those are not capital projects, those are grants. I mean, we're ultimately helping CRPD and CLU or whoever with those projects.
And why are those two projects falling under the city manager category rather than, say, Public Works or Community Development or anything like that?
Good question. City manager is the lead office on both of those projects, I mean, CLU Pool is a perfect example where the assistant city manager had worked on that project and had developed the agreement and worked with CLU and CRPD, so that's where it came, that's where it was in the budget. We can certainly in future years put it outside of the city manager's office.
It falls under intergovernmental relations, intergovernmental relations, and we'll probably have a non-departmental section of the budget at some point in the future for these type of things, because it does distort the history of what, the city manager's office is an administrative
Correct.
Function, and we don't like to run programs out of our office, so that's something we'll clean up, thank you.
Yeah, I did wonder about that, thank you. And then also you mentioned under the library fund that you incorporated the $195,000 from the Ventura County system. Is that the money that is being disputed currently by the county?
Yes, I specifically highlight that because that is the money that is part of the annual, or the funding agreement that we have with the county to provide library services for those unincorporated areas within, well within the area. So this budget and this, the library budget does anticipate full funding of that, and with that said, if that money becomes in jeopardy or is not funded, we would have to make corresponding reductions in the library, and $200,000 is a significant reduction for the library.
It's my understanding that the library commission voted not to fund this anymore, in other words, we would be then losing $200,000.
I can't speak, I understand that they made a recommendation that may be coming to the county board, we do have an agreement with them, and we do provide services for the unincorporated county residents that do use that, that does use the various libraries.
I can clarify that, the county library board voted, it was a split vote, but did vote to encourage the county board of supervisors to unilaterally break the 20-year agreement between the county and the city, which consists of property tax dollars paid by unincorporated area property owners dedicated to library service, which goes to the two closest libraries, and so the recommendation is to break that agreement, to use that money for libraries outside of the Canal Valley, outside of the supervisory district, so we're working on that, and the CRPD board is weighing in on that on May 14th, and it comes back to council on May 19th, and then from there it goes to the county board of supervisors. And we are negotiating at the staff level to see if we can reach some sort of compromise, so that's where we are.
Thank you. On slide number 49, item number three, reduce CRPD support, what exactly does that mean?
Well, this is just, originally it was a recommendation to increase rental, or increase their rent for 401, 403, or 401 Hillcrest, 401, 403, and so I just made it general. I think that that was something that was identified as a potential short-term gap measure, I highlighted it, we did not implement it, it was actually a very small amount, and so we just sort of highlight it as a point of interest.
Okay, so it does not mean reducing the assistance CRPD receives from the City of Thousand Oaks for various projects?
This was specifically for rent that we charged for 401, 403 Hillcrest.
Okay, and then also I'm looking at, of course, the biggest expense being salaries and benefits.
Yes.
And yes, the employees of the City of Thousand Oaks do an outstanding job, they have a very good reputation, being very professional. However, I must ask this particular question, namely, the salary and benefits will continue to increase over the next two years, there is no suggestion or recommendation to, because of the current union agreement, to freeze or reduce those salaries. So we're looking at, even the council member salaries, increases are also included in this particular budget, it's not being reduced at all. And I noticed under the brainstorm, brainstorming action group, that recommendations were made to reduce council members' expenses and furloughs even for city employees. I don't see that in this particular budget. Why not?
Well, let me clarify, when you say it's not in this budget, you are correct, that salary increase or salary adjustments are included in the draft, there is no proposed reduction of the city council salaries either. On slide number 50, I do highlight as a long-term strategy is review employee labor agreements. We do currently have MOUs with each of the three bargaining units, we have made a concentrated effort to be in compliance with those agreements, we are, we do have staff reductions, we are asking more of employees to step up, as I noted, we have several unfunded positions. I think that we talked, one of the council members talked about the morale of employees and their ability to step up and do more with less, and I think that's why we included the salary adjustments, and at this point are recommending to go to the unions to ask for anything. They have been more or less partners over the past year in trying to address our revenue shortfalls, and again, with the staffing reductions, we're not recommending any reductions in salary increases.
Okay, certainly looking at a big budget gap over the next few years.
Yes.
We have to consider looking at everything, not only the recommendations by staff.
And we believe by unfunding the positions, when we talk about 28 positions, certainly if we just use the average of $100,000 per position, when you go salary benefits and overhead, certainly close to $3 million reduction, and that has assisted in addressing the $6 million revenue shortfall we've had over the several years, so I think that in that aspect, we have done, tried our best to adjust salary and benefit costs accordingly.
I'd like to add a little to that for clarification purposes, with respect to salaries, the recommendation in the report is, because we deal with two one-year budgets.
Correct.
Many local governments, many cities, they just deal with one year at a time, so we have the advantage of additional foresight and long-term planning. The recommendation, and we're dealing with three, three-year labor contracts, if you will, we're in year one now, next year, the first year of the two-year budget's year two, and the second year of the two-year budget's year three, and what staff is recommending is we stick with the labor agreements for the first year, and as we go through that first year, take a good look at what's happening on the revenue side and expenditure side and retirements and that sort of thing, and if the economy is not turning around and/or getting worse, the unions, and you heard from some of them at the beginning, are willing to sit down with us to take a very close look at the second year, and if we need to look at freezing or even reducing salaries in that second year to get us through, that's something we'll contemplate, but the goal here is stick to the negotiated contracts for the first year, take a look where we're at, and then take action for the second year. So what we're recommending tonight does not guarantee anything for that second year, but that's where we're at, and I hope that makes that clear, so, thanks.
Thank you very much, it does make sense, and of course, looking at everything that is going to increase in terms of fees, like water fees are proposed to be increased as well, and losing a roving car and impacting, having an impact now on public service, police services as well, gives me grave concerns, so I prefer to cut elsewhere than to reduce, for example, public safety or even increase the water rates even more, and those are just some of the examples, thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, is Chief Mattson, I actually have a few questions about the, or Captain Pantis, whatever. Is the roving car, is that a 56-hour car?
It's an 84-hour car, meaning it's out on the road seven days a week, 12 hours a day, it's scheduled times are 2:30 in the afternoon to 3 o'clock in the morning.
Right, did we look at just cutting back the hours of operation and making it more consistent with, and I don't remember all your configurations, but maybe consistent with some of your patrol cars?
Yeah, well, we have, the six-speed cars are 24-hour cars.
Right.
And those are your most expensive units to put out on the street. We have, this is one of seven 84-hour cars, the other six are the two Ocean cars, the two John cars, and the two Ida cars that back up the six speeds. They're roving cars too, but they're roving the six speeds. I'm not sure I quite understand the question.
Well, I was just looking at, I didn't know, one, what the configuration of the car was in terms of how many hours of operation, so you answered that question.
It's 2.2 bodies of post-factor?
Okay. But seven days a week, 12 hours a day?
Yes.
Right, so it's typically used as 3:00 in the afternoon until 3:00 in the morning type of car, and we did look at, okay, what if we reduce it to 40 hours?
Right.
But, and basically it cuts it in half, and when we're looking at a proposed cut of a reduction of $500,000, we're not getting there by reducing it 40 hours.
Okay, I get that, that's, I get that piece, that's just a number though. My question is, pretty much what Randy's talking about, is if you cut it to 40 hours, that's, and I haven't done the numbers here because they didn't give us that, but that's $250,000, half of the 500?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. Then my question for the city manager is, you have short-term gaps implemented, which just by way of, I guess, you know, they're not, these are what you're proposing to implement, because council hasn't approved these yet, even though this is just a study session, just semantics, but we're on the same page, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then you have additional short-term gap measures, and Ms. Hong talked about, for example, does your budget include the elimination of the open space transfer?
No.
No, it does not.
No, not this year.
Okay, so if we eliminated that, now we're at 350.
And what slide, so everybody knows what page we're on?
49. So now we're at 350. I don't know what community grants, because I don't know if there's a value to that.
Those are the sports endowment.
Right. See, these are the, and with all due respect to the chief, I'm not trying to run the police department here, but these are the, these are the type of policy decisions that we need to make. I recognize staffs making the recommendations. I recognize staff's making the recommendations and they're trying to keep a number of programs afloat, but when you're talking about reducing a frontline police resource, but at the same time we're going to set money aside for open space and continue to fund sports programs, I think we need to take a real hard look at that. And maybe we can't fund the car the entire time, but I think staff needs to go back and rework some of these very important programs, but they are not critical missions for the city, or any city for that matter, before we start cutting into the meat and potatoes. You know, and with all due respect, the other thing is, I'm sure this car's doing something, working from 3:00 in the afternoon to 3:00 in the morning, right? And so we probably want to get a call, a list of call for service or something so we can gauge who's going to be doing the extra work and what this car's doing.
I have those numbers.
Okay.
You know, since 2002, the car has handled a little over 15,000 calls for service between 2002 and 2008.
So how many per year is that?
That's, if you figure out the amount of officers that we have on the street that would have to take up the slack, it's about 0.38 calls per day per officer.
So just round it to four calls a day per officer?
No, that'd just be a third of a call a day.
A third of a call? Okay. So the rest of the time they are, but they're designed not to take radio calls, if I heard you right, they're more of a backup? How's that work?
The nine-robber car, the roving car?
Yeah.
No, it can still be a primary car. Those 15,000 calls for service in the six years, it, those are, it was the primary unit on those calls.
Okay. So during that 12-hour deployment, it's not uncommon that the call, the officer would not get one call for service? That doesn't make sense to me.
Your question, councilman, was it, they're not getting one call for service?
I'm responding to what Jeff was saying, and that is, I was interested in the calls for service for this roving car over the last year.
It could go an entire shift without a call for service.
Okay.
And another night it could have a lot of calls for service.
Okay, so in the course of a year, how many calls for service would this car receive?
I think I have that somewhere. I don't think I wrote it down. It was like 2,000 some calls for service. 204, 205, something like that, for the year.
For the year? So that's three a day? 365 days a year, right? Three can change, which is maybe four, I don't know, something around there. Okay, so I just think there is, there is some value to this, this resource. And I just think before we give staff kind of the blessing that we think this is a good plan, there's maybe some program issues that at least we should evaluate, get some dollar figures to find out if maybe a combination of a reduced hours for the rover car, which what Captain Pentis was talking about, maybe down to a 40-hour car, and then some of these other programs to look at if that might make better sense.
If I can interject, I think what the police chief and the police captain and their staff have suggested is we do this, we try it, we see it, we look at the data, because over the last several years, we actually have added officers and services to the police department, which has driven down response time and the calls and so on. You talked about earlier the school resource officer converting from DARE from two officers to three SROs. That's a frontline service with a lot of calls, very visible, the Internet Predator Detective and some other measures. And all of us and all departments have had to step up and do more with less. And some of the, I hear reference to the community grants, some of these grants go to what our, we were talking about this earlier, the police department refers to as frontline services and giving the youth of the community activities and things to do so they're not engaged in idle, or not in idle activity, engaged in bad behavior, if you will. So it is a multi-disciplinary.
Well, my in response to that would be, one, then don't look at those grants, then look at grants that don't affect public safety, or we need to have a better look at what those grants exactly are. And then secondly, I don't think anybody's suggesting that police doesn't do their fair share. It looks to me like they're doing a lot of their fair share to the tune of, they were like asked half a million dollars. So I'm just suggesting that maybe, there may be opportunities to reduce that to a quarter of a million by reduced hours for service for that patrol car, and then look at other opportunities to make up that gap at a minimum for council to look at. You know, I'm a little concerned, I don't know how it was, but the reference is, well, the number was 500,000. I don't think that was accurate. I think maybe that's, that was just, you know, that was the number they were looking at in order to get to a budget place.
2%.
2%. I think, the way I think council used to evaluate that is, is that you tell us what the, what the delta is that we need to make up, and then we give you at least our feedback on how that might be accomplished with different policies, different approaches to policies. So that's, that's all I'm suggesting. And maybe at the end of the day, Scott, that we do exactly what your little pamphlet is here. I just don't think, just looking at some of the just general things that Candace and John covered, that in my view, that we can sustain those programs basically without any reduction and, and cut a police patrol car out. To me, it's not that it's a sacred cow, but there's other things we have to look at before we start cutting that completely. I think, I think the fact that we can put it to 40 hours makes a lot of sense. So. The other thing is, just from a semantic standpoint, I'm concerned when we say eliminate the open space transfer, that's something that we did way back when. I'd like to use the word reprogram, because when times are better, I don't want us to forget that we actually used to do that.
Or suspend.
Well, we're actually going to reprogram it if we give it to the police. We're not going to suspend it, we're going to put it somewhere else. And then, there was actually some, I thought this was an interesting recommendation, and I was going to ask Mr. Mitnick. On page 96 of the BAG, the brainstorm action group, came up with some interesting proposals. Item 15, close city hall between Christmas and New Year's holidays. And the employees would then take whatever time they have to make up for those days. I can tell you in Los Angeles, there's not a whole lot of work getting done in a big city between those holidays across the board. I'm just curious how much work's really getting done here at city hall during those work hours? And how much would be saved if we actually took a look at unpaid closures of city hall, where there would be minimal impact to the public? And, you know, that's a lot of salary savings for a week. I guess what I'm asking is, I'd like you to evaluate that. Unless you're just telling me that, no, it's, we're going, we're going 12 hours a day, we're doing all kinds of important stuff between Christmas and New Year's.
That's something we can look at, we've talked about it, and there are some cities that don't necessarily do the unpaid leave, but they do shut down. The challenge for us with the Citroen Plaza is, because the utility savings would be minimal to none, because the theaters run full speed, especially during that time of year, there's a lot of programming going on, so we still have, it's like the weekends, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the weekend, so we still have the utility demand. But this is something we can certainly look at, and that would be something we work on with the unions too, because it's a de facto furlough, is what it becomes.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, 32% of our costs are salaries, according to your members.
Oh yeah, even more than that.
Well, 50%, I guess, if you look at police and all that stuff, so.
That's something we can definitely look at, absolutely.
I'm not advocating, it just, I'm assuming labor was part of the BAG group? It wasn't just all the managers?
It was, it was specifically to employees. It was, yeah.
Okay, so I made the assumption that this is actually coming from the employees.
Right.
So, you know, as I was going through, some of them were kind of crazy, but, but some of the other ones, actually, if you think about the service that we provide here at city hall, and I don't know that there would be a huge community impact, and I contrast that with closing library or something like that, where there would be a real and measurable impact where people would lie in there closed. And, and so I think it's important that.
Are you just recommending or suggesting for city hall? Or are we talking, I mean, treatment plant would not close and library?
I don't think you can close the treatment plant.
I understand, I just want to make sure it's specifically to this facility. It's specifically to general.
The BAG, the recommendation is just for city hall, so I just assumed that meant the libraries and MSC and.
The theaters.
Hill Canyon, theaters and all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it to you guys on what, you know, I would imagine you need a skeleton crew out at, out at Hill Canyon. If the library, if the theaters are operating, probably somebody from theaters seems to be here, so.
No, it's very specific.
But I just thought that was an interesting proposal, that if it came from labor, could be implemented for this budget. And I don't know what the salary savings would be, but again, that goes back to, that might make more sense than trimming hours off of a patrol car.
I did quiz them when some of these came up, when we were talking on the group, about how they really all felt. I mean, some people felt this way, it'd be great to have a furlough, some weren't so excited about it because of the salary impact to them. So you've got both, both groups, you know, both ideas coming from that group. Some are in favor and some not.
Yeah, because it basically says they would basically use vacation time during that period to make up for it, so it isn't that they would be getting not paid.
Well, they would get paid our annual leave, so it's not really a saving, just still going to have that.
There may be some folks that actually have to come to work and would prefer not to, in order to keep us open. So from a management standpoint, you're probably having to schedule vacations and holidays in order to keep folks here, to keep the place running, and they would actually prefer to be home with their families and just not have to worry about it. So I don't know, I'll leave that to you guys.
It would also reduce slightly our long-term liability.
For the, for the, for the hours earned?
Absolutely.
Right, so there wouldn't be an impact necessarily on operating expenditures, but there would be an ultimate impact to our fund balance, our reserves, the liability, yes.
And then just a comment on the openers for the contract. Just from my perspective, I think when the council agrees to a contract and we put our hands out and we shake hands with the employees, we have to demonstrate, in my view, a state of fiscal emergency before we're going to go back and ask the employees to break the contract. So while I think it's something that, and I can appreciate other cities are looking at that, I think the employees at Thousand Oaks, they do a good job, they, they are there when we need them and when the community needs them. The expectation is when you have a contract is exactly that, it is a contract. And I'm not saying that it's, you know, that no matter what, that thing is in place. I am saying though, that we, as a, as a city, we should be in a state of fiscal emergency before we're going to go and ask the employees to reopen a contract that we, the council, approved and we agreed to. Things happen and economics change, but certainly based on the information we have tonight, there is no way, I would entertain looking at that. No way. We would be doing major, major cuts, including police, before we went back and opened the contract. You know, we just need to be cognizant the next contract round we negotiate, try to do a little bit better job of forecasting what our, what our revenues are going to be. So those are my comments.
No additional comments? Mr. Gillette has a question.
Just one question. John, when do we start the, go for another cycle of, on the franchise fees, the trash hauler? When does that process start again?
Actually, it's starting now. It's in, actually in process now, and that's where I sort of highlighted a couple of the adjustments we're going to be negotiating with the, the franchisees, the trash haulers. The implementation would be January 1st of 2010. And the public works director's here, if you want more question, or.
No, I was just trying to figure out, because I know the, I know the amount of, the amount of dollars involved in that process, so I was just, just trying to figure out when that factored in, when it started. Thank you.
January 1st.
Just a quick comment. Thank you. A quick comment to Mr. Fox's comments about public safety. We did, we were reassured by both the chief and assistant chief that they've looked at the statistics and that this will have the least impact on response times. And that was, I mean, obviously we should look at other suggestions on that, but I think they're the ones that looked at the numbers, and they're the ones that are saying, let's look at response times now, and let's look at six months or next quarter or a couple of months from now and see if there's any impact. It is possible that that car was put in with the best intentions and it is not really helping response times. That was the comment. And I'm sure you have one in response.
I do.
Children. Mr. Fox?
I would just comment, and I've said it, and I respectfully say this, public safety is a political decision. It's not a decision made by police chiefs or fire chiefs or city managers, it's made by us. We determine what the level of public safety is going to be for Thousand Oaks. With all due respect to the chief and Mr. Mitnick, we get to decide that. And all I'm suggesting is that we get a little more evaluation and we look at a few more programs before we cut that car. And I think we have data now to support that at least three or four times a day, somebody thinks that car's important and they call it. So, you know, I just think it's something we need to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Mitnick, you had something you wanted to clarify?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, excellent discussion. And to help better understand the recommended strategy, and the councilman, Fox, is correct. I mean, we just throw out, we put together a menu of options for you, you decide which ones you want to do, and then we go and implement them. And part of our thought process is, because this is difficult, this is the first time since, I think, 1994, the City of Thousand Oaks has had to make these type of decisions. And back then, you actually laid people off, gave them pink slips. So we're not at that stage, but if it doesn't turn around the next year or two, we could be moving in that direction, but we hope not. The, the strategy here is, and we pare down the gap to about a million dollars a year, 900,000 first year, 1.1 second year. The strategy is, at the end of each year, look at what type of year and savings there are, if any, and then put that right back into the emergency contingency reserve account. As the economy approves and revenue, recurring revenues go up, our recommendation would be to restore that, that roving car. That would be staff's recommendation of all the programs that had to be cut or reduced or held back, that would be item number one, that we would work and put the funding back. So this is not part of a game plan to permanently reduce that, and we just wanted to make that clear. So thank you.
Yes, there are. Yeah, thank you for your comment. Yes, we do have cards. First card is Debbie Gregory, followed by Steve McCombs, followed by Joe Pagano. Yeah, you do.
Wow. These are challenging financial times. We don't have a shopping center or strip mall in the city where we don't have empty shops. Sales are down, property assessments are down, development fees are down, and we may lose more with 1A, which doesn't look like it's going to pass. I don't think the only answer is increasing fees and reducing services. We have to look past that. I didn't think, Mr. Fox and I don't agree on very much, but there are needs and wants, and I couldn't agree more with him than when it comes to the police. From my point of view, 500,000, 250,000, any reduction is unacceptable to the people of this community. Especially in these times, we're going to have higher crimes, and if you're that person on that call, you're going to want the police right away. You're not going to want to hear that you're the third call or, or whatever. I think that the 7 million in the city manager's fund, 5 million for Lang Ranch, that needs to be looked at. It really is financially irresponsible, and it might border our malfeasance in these times to give Cano CPRD 5 million for phase one of an intrusive park that the community does not want, and will eventually be a Sports X when all the phases come in. That doesn't go into the needs, that goes into the wants. If you look at the demographics, there's less little league children. We have elementary schools that are closing because of less students. What is happening is our population is aging. It could change, but right now it's not changing. And we need to make sound financial decisions. It's well, it would be a good move for you to listen to the people who generate the revenues in the city and see what they say. Also, I don't understand Mr. Gillette's comments. These are tough times, and to take money with a 6 million deficit already, to take money from the reserve. money from the reserves to help the morale of the employees in the city, we need to wake up here. I have clients, the federal government, city governments, state governments, county governments, and people are taking furloughs all over America, people have challenges. And we can't barf from Peter to pay Paul to make people feel better. You know, this is what's happening in the world, we have to deal with it the best we can. I don't mean to be insensitive, but it's going around. And the city of Thousand Oaks is no different than the city of New York, or the state of California, others, we have to make some hard decisions. And we can't go into debt to make people feel better and more secure and increase morale. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve McComas, if you're here? Good. Followed by Joe Pagano, followed by Ron Segal.
Steve McComas, longtime Thousand Oaks resident, and, you know, I had this very nice kind of speech prepared that I was gonna come up here and read, but I think I'm just gonna take a minute and just actually comment on a number of the things that I've heard that have been presented in this forum tonight. First of all, you know, I found it very interesting, we're talking about the budget, that, just a couple of specific examples. When we were presenting, or the budget was being presented, you know, we found out that, well, in our budget, there's this possibility that Ventura County may not want to pay this $250,000 to cover a portion of libraries, it's already been agreed upon, but, you know, so that's at risk, but we're gonna count it as positive in our cash flow. Yet, we also learned that there's already been a recommendation from a committee not to make that particular cash flow. However, we're counting in our budget, okay? Let's move on. We also learned, within the budgeting process, that in one particular key revenue stream, that the county is actually presenting, or forecasting a 4% decrease, 4% annualized decrease, and yet, in our budget, we are actually projecting a 2% increase, okay? Continuing on, we've also, within this budget, there were numerous references to contingencies regarding, well, if Proposition 8 is repealed, then we're at risk for this particular amount of money, but we're gonna go ahead and count that as a positive, but we're at risk for it. If Prop 1A doesn't pass, we're at additional risk that this money could go away, but again, we're gonna count this money in our budget. So I guess my question, one question is, why is it in every single case that the numbers used in projecting the budget are the most optimistic? Now, I deal with scenario planning in my, in my, in my work all the time, and when I deal with scenario planning, I do a best case, a base case, and a worst case. And yet, this budget seems to be nothing but base case optimistic perspectives. Now, I wanna comment on, or just pick up on something that Mr. Fox, a comment that he made. He said, "We need to take a hard look at programs and make sure that they're mission critical for this city." And I think that's a very, very important statement, it's something I really want to echo. The other thing he said is, "We need to really look at those grants, and if they're not impacting safety, and yet, we're going, we're proposing a budget which is gonna reduce our police expenditures by 2%, gonna take one out of seven police cars that are currently run on 84 hours a week, we're gonna take one of those out of circulation, and we're gonna expect that we're actually not gonna negatively impact public safety?" I disagree with that. So I think that if we pull it all together and think about what are those grants that are out there on the table that don't impact safety, I think first and foremost, we have to look at the $5 million grant that is currently proposed for the Lang Ranch Park District, and for some reason mysteriously resides in the city manager's line item. We need to take a look at that, because obviously...
You need to wrap it up now.
Pardon me?
You need to wrap it up.
Okay, well...
Three's up.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, I guess, I kinda take obsession with that, because when we were in earlier, and I sat up there, I observed that the people who were talking about the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that they not only went over by over four minutes on some occasions, which is 120% of their original allocation...
Thank you for your...
But in fact, questions were asked of them, which in fact allowed them to continue on with their statements. So I, I just, you know, I will close now, but...
Wrap it up.
I will wrap it up now.
Okay.
So I find it both, let's see, I would say it is both inappropriate and fiscally irresponsible to earmark $5 million of taxpayer funds to go to the Canale, or the CRPD and the Lang Ranch Community Park District, when we're in a situation whereby we already have a $2 million deficit, and if you look at this budget, we have a risk of exceeding that, of doubling that, if some of these contingencies, which they have counted as positives, in fact, come through, and those revenues are not available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pagano, followed by Ron Segal, followed by Susan Tansky.
My name's Joe Pagano, and I am a Thousand Oaks resident since 1964. Excuse my voice. As our local financial situation worsens, and the moody's and standards of poor ratings agencies have assigned negative outlooks to all local municipalities, we are in grave financial situation here. This means bonds rates will increase, and it will cost our cities more to build projects. This also means my taxes will increase, and public services will decrease. If this council gives Canale Park and Rec District $5 million for Lang Ranch Park, it will be a misdirection of our tax dollars at this time, and all of you will be held responsible and accountable for the misuse of this budget at the next election. The IRS reported tax revenues down 25%. These people are talking to you, you've gotta listen. But our federal and state and local governments are raising our taxes. What does our city council and manager do? They are determined to give the CRPD $5 million, and the city manager. There's a two, over a $2 million deficit. No one seems to understand, we've been spending hours here, it doesn't take an engineer to see what you can do. There's money in the city manager's funds for the park. Let that money control the deficit, close the deficit, pay our bills, and get the park done at a different date. The next wave of lost revenue will be from industrial and commercial, that's what these people have been telling you. Vacancies are increasing. I see it, I'm a financial guy. There will be another wave of home foreclosures. It's gonna come, because banks have been withholding eviction notices for the last three months. It's gonna happen, watch. Another auto dealership is closing. Your analysts are right on target. Rule on side of caution. We expect you, our council members, not to be blindsided by what's going on, and not to cherry pick special interest projects. Our state government has a $42 billion budget deficit, and funds to the city will be harder to come by. Ventura County unemployment is at 11% and climbing. The news keeps getting worse. In the last year, the state lost, the state lost another $100,000, $100,000 jobs, and Canale families are learning to live with less. I still have another minute, please. Our local government...
This is not a habit that we're gonna live with. You are limited to three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have been urged to allow you another minute.
Canale Valley families are learning to live within their means. Our local government should do the same. What I see here is a major disconnect. This council wants to continue spending big time. You're determined to give the CRPD $5 million for Lang Ranch Park. The CRPD has stated that it will get funding from state and other sources. Don't count on it. $25 million project should not be started because it'll never get finished. The city will need to feed more money to the CRPD for this project when it finds out they ran out of funds. What's going on here? The Lang Ranch Park is about big government and its agency wasteful spending. Use this $5 million to fund the Level 1 projects that need immediate attention and balance our budget. The citizens of Thousand Oaks see what's going on, and we don't like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Tansky will be following Mr. Segal.
Mr. Mayor, council people, good morning. I'd like to point out a couple of things as well, and that has to do with fiscal responsibility and how much you've been entrusted to care for our finances. With regards to the lakes, Mr. Mitnick was quoted saying that what was done with a $96,000 consultant fee needed to be done, specifically for the lakes. Also, you don't need a consultant to know that if, if the program that was initially offered to the, to the council, and what the council agreed on, they were supposed to build a thousand-car parking structure, not a parking lot. They were also supposed to put in a 12-screen theater, as well as the Discovery Center. They were, we were supposed to help them with the Discovery Center. And the other thing that I found out was that they were supposed to put in a three-story office building. Now, if you put all that together, that's a lot of people in the heart of Thousand Oaks, that would generate a lot of income to the lakes. So I don't really think you need to spend $96,000 of a budget that's already in trouble on a consultant. I didn't, I didn't hear what the cost of the buyouts were for the city employees, that they're gonna be, that you're gonna buy out their, and what their retirement incentives were going to be. Also spending $20,000 for a survey to ask the citizens of Thousand Oaks that if, at this time, they want new taxes and fees. And with regards to the park, we simply can't afford it. To grant the parks $5 million for a park that's gonna have limited usage is not right. At the same time, straining the assets of the police at a time when we all know that when the economy goes south, there's more violence, there's more gang interdiction that needs to be done. Also, the way I saw it, and I'm not sure if this is exactly right, but the cost of the park, is that two and a half times what the library expenditure's gonna be? Did I see that right? I could be corrected. But when you're laying off good employees, and you've all acknowledged that the employees of Thousand Oaks are all good, worthy employees, and you're telling them that they're gonna be furloughed without pay between Christmas and New Year's, is not right. It's not right for the citizens, it's not right for the employees that you value so much. So I hope that as, as a citizen, as taxpayer, that I've entrusted you, as my fellow citizens have done, to be vigilant, to be prudent, and to be responsible in forging this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Susan Tansky, followed by Bruce Cornelius, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
I agree with everything that has been said thus far, and I don't want to repeat a lot of it, but you keep, the staff that gave the financial report talks about, well, they're hoping at the end of 2009 that it'll get better, or 2010. You give figures on unemployment. Those are not correct anyway, because in the figures for unemployment, part-time workers are not counted, those who are not getting unemployment and have given up on work are not counted, so the unemployment rates are high. You, this is not, this is, there was a riveting report, and it is very, very disturbing, really disturbing, because you do not have the money to give for a, to have Little Leaguers a sports complex at Lang Ranch Community Park. You don't have it now. Maybe in the future, when you are flush with cash, as I'm sure you will be in future years, but you don't know when, because we have a worldwide fiscal crisis that affects the United States and every other country. It is the biggest financial fiasco, or Ponzi scheme, whatever you wanna call it, that has ever been in the history of the United States. And there are people crying for food, and losing jobs, and outsourcing, you know all that. And if you like transparency, that's a buzzword now, how come the park was buried under the city manager? Many people don't know the scope of this park, the lights, the, I mean, I don't, and I want to just, you know, I'm having trouble breathing, because I had to stay here so long to talk, so I would appreciate it if you would be kind enough to give me two more minutes to just get some words out. I want you to know that parking is planned for hundreds of cars, polluting the air even more, for this park that is a priority three, it is not essential. Little Leaguers have places to play, it isn't an essential park. If anything you should do with it, when you have money, is have it be an outdoor educational center specializing in organic gardening and composting for all ages, teaching children, schoolchildren and adults how to grow vegetables and fruits without the use of synthetic fertilizers and toxic pesticides, for no pesticide is safe, no matter what we are told, is an art which needs to be nurtured and developed. And I, developed, and I leave you with these thoughts. One in 15,000 Amish people, children are autistic, but in the United States, it's one in 155 to 160. You use pesticides and all kinds of chemicals that you know nothing about the effects, they have not been studied adequately, and it is, it is an abomination that you would spend funds on this park when you need police and safety and essential needs for schoolchildren and libraries...
Miss Tansky, time to wrap.
You know, the dumber the population is, the less they fight back.
Thank you. Bruce Cornelius, followed by Suzanne Duckett, followed by Nick Kidway. Miss Duckett apparently left. And Mr. Cornelius is not with us? Okay. Mr. Kidway, you're up.
All most good morning. Thanks for making, making us feel unwanted, unloved, I mean, I did not get riveted listening to that, I mean, just basic fundamentals, I mean, citizens, the questions should be first, then you can take two hours asking the staff, rather than making us wait. It's not a laughing matter, Mr. Fox. I mean, I don't know when this city will wake up and have a council and a city government that respects the citizens and, and the taxpayers. I was attacked by a staff member regarding the, these non-resident fee, and I was just shocked, I don't know if he gets five weeks and he's been off all the time. The commission at the county voted 5-2 on April the 3rd, this is, and I sent this email to staff and council also, and staff mentioned this, that they're gonna take away the non-resident fee from, from, from the city. And for the staff to enter that is just like the Iraq War and Mr. Bush, is that it was done off, off the books for $10 billion a month, and as if it didn't matter. And this is exactly the game that the city, this city is playing. I would appreciate if TO TV will show the overhead. I have that from the 1999-2000 budget, and that's the finance department... And that's the finance department. Since you don't provide enough, so I can go close to it, what I'm showing you is the finance director, assistant director, and then the different department heads, and then you see the lines. What you really need to do now is eliminate some of these positions. Right now, the assistant city finance director's position is open. You chop it, you don't need it. Then these two over here, you eliminate these two. This is what is happening in the private sector. This is what my company did. This is why people are losing their jobs. With computers and all that, you don't need so many middle managers. I mean, Santa Paula is eliminating 12%. I mean, this city is at buildout. This is from 1999-2000. I mean, TO TV, please show that. It's horrible handwriting, but it gets the point. The budgets, your money has improved, has increased by 100%, 250%. Look at this. 300%. I mean, council members erroneously saying we are a low property tax city. What is this redevelopment agency money? That's property taxes. You are getting close to, what? $17 million. I mean, this is the hogwash that the staff is teaching you. And it's always the same. Cut the library, cut the police. And regarding this red light, I mean, I would appreciate if somebody in this city would take up this position. Look at the home people hearing. Look at how the citizens were mistreated and allowed two minutes. I was not allowed to give my testimony and how the legitimate business was not allowed to operate in the city. Thank you, Dr. Glancy, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Kidway, for speaking. Mr. Friedel.
Thank you, Mayor Glancy, City Manager Mitnick, members of council. I guess I come tonight as a voice that is going to try to appeal to collective memory of this community about what is possible, what can be done, what we do when we work together. In good times and in bad times, the community pool at CLU recently, the teen center, the senior center, Hillcrest Center, the library, COSCA. These are things that didn't happen only in a good year. The planning for all of these things took many years. I would suggest that this city is showing the height of fiscal responsibility to have 20% in reserves. It's showing the height of fiscal responsibility to have, for two years already, had $5 million set aside for the last remaining community park in the Westlake area of Thousand Oaks, whose kids in that area currently have to drive across town to use nightlighted sports facilities in another part, in maybe somebody else's backyard. So as I was sitting here watching the Public Works Week banner behind you, and I love Public Works, I got to thinking and quickly Googled, because I think a lot of what's happening is fear, fear about the park. And I invite anybody to come down to any of our community parks and see what happens there at night and what's going on. But fear of the economic times and thinking about what can happen, we're worried about, is this the next Great Depression? And Public Works combining those two thoughts. Mount Rushmore, Empire State Building, Hoover Dam, Golden Gate Bridge, all built in the '30s. Thank God our officials at that time weren't limited in vision and still had the willingness to commit to great ideas. I think that our general plan of our city, the park district master plan, working together, has green infrastructure equally as important to public works infrastructure. The ring of green is something this community can brag about that I challenge anyone to find locally owned open space to the degree percentage owned in land area that this city and park district have been able to put together. The parks are part of that. The park plan calls for our community parks to be spread out around the community. And that is a crucial element of the general plan, the parks master plan, the Lang Ranch specific plan, and it's been contemplated for 30 years. We've been talking about it 30 years. This isn't an idea that came up this year. So what you've committed to by putting aside $5 million for the last couple of years is to say, we're putting some energy, some juice, some support behind this thing. That helps us, the park district, go get money from the feds, go get money from private foundations, ask the state for money when times are good. But ultimately, we're going to try to put together a park that the folks that live there can be really proud of and the whole city can be part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedel. No, no more cards. Go for it.
Okay. It looks to me, Mr. Mitnick, they are looking for...
Interject real quickly. Comment cards, eight against.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Looks three recommendations to receive the input from the draft operating budget. Authorize council finance audit committee to discuss alternatives. What is the council finance audit committee? Is that you guys? Okay. And then schedule a public hearing on June 9th. I would move all those, all three of those items. And also include in my motion, the items that came up tonight specific to the, I don't know if I can remember them all, but specifically, Ms. Hong, I noticed you were taking some notes. Did you get all those items down? Specifically, what I'd like to see come back is an evaluation of the 40-hour car and a mixture of other funding sources for, to make up that delta. And then the other thing is, at least explore the look at, which was what the employees suggested with respect to the closure of City Hall over the holidays, Christmas to New Year's. Not advocating that, I'm just saying it's a suggestion that the employees put forward, and I think it deserves some review. Those are my comments.
Okay. Comments to the motion, Mr. Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support the motion. I did want to make sure that you did get in the issue that I had talked about, about employee anxiety. And I think you got that, didn't you, John?
I don't think I included that, but we certainly will, I'd like that to come back as well. I'm not quite sure...
It's related directly to adequacy of service and employee, the reduction of employee anxiety during this period of uncertainty.
Any other concerns from the council, I'll just throw in my motion. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Ms. Irwin?
I had mentioned earlier, at least looking at other possibilities for the RV storage, maybe with the same use, selling it to somebody private or with other uses.
The only, I'll put all these things in because I think we need, that's the whole point of what Mr. Mitnick brought this forward. My only comment to that would be, and I would defer to that, is land values are very depressed right now, and I don't know from a strategy standpoint if selling city assets, property, would be a good move for us, but that's what we can get back from the staff.
He was talking about as a long-term strategy, so just so we, you know, there's been a lot of costs looked at evaluating what to do with that property, so...
Yeah, we can, right.
Ms. Bill?
Thank you. In looking at the list of the brainstorming action group, they have more than 100 items. I would also like to include, to the list that we're currently working on, item number 12, suspend or reduce certain employee benefits such as tuition reimbursement and computer loans. Also, item number 18, implement salary freeze. Item number 25, reduce or eliminate travel expenses. And I want to stress that regarding the salary freeze, that should also actually apply to the city council. Item number 35, reevaluate council compensation and benefits. And I think for now, that would be it out of more than 120 recommendations by the employees of the city of Thousand Oaks.
You get all that?
Okay. And I have some things to consider, not necessarily in the expense column, but...
Just for the record, just so there's no misunderstanding, I'm not going to support a furlough. So I'm throwing that in as a gesture of we can get that back, but I don't want to mislead anybody here that I'm going to support furloughing any employees. The only reason I brought it up to the one was to evaluate over the holiday situation, but I think a work furlough program, in the sense that I think is being advocated, I don't have any interest in, because that goes against the contract situation.
Yeah, I think that in the interest of fairness, that everything should be put into the bucket and extracted as required, I think, most of the council.
That's where I'm coming from.
And in terms of what my comments are, the city has run a fairly lean operation for some time now. And in good times, that's a great thing. But as times get leaner, you don't have much cushion to fall back on, and it becomes extremely difficult for the staff to make up for shortfalls when they're already operating short. We've changed over from a developing community to a maintenance community. You know, our income from development fees are down rather considerably. I think it was about 85, 90%. That means that a lot of the infrastructure needs in the community are going to have to be picked up by the general fund. General fund is down $8 million over the last three years. So to get it back to its three-year ago level, that takes us back to where it was. That doesn't take in, bring in additional funds that are going to have to accommodate the infrastructure needs that arrive. So I think while we're looking at the budget, we need to also look at how to build up the general fund. Those are my comments. I just want to make sure that we discuss that. Mr. Fox?
Sure, Ms. Bill?
I just would like to make one quick comment to acknowledge the people who spoke tonight regarding Lang Ranch. I know Lang Ranch Park is very important, but in these fiscal times, I want to just state for the record that I do support putting on hold $5 million for Lang Ranch until the city recovers financially from the whole situation. So I just wanted to say that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, you know, along that line, I just want to comment that the items that have been suggested, at least by myself, and I think some of the others, are ongoing costs. I think some of the comments that were made tonight were on for capital one-time costs. And I appreciate all the speakers sticking around almost midnight to make their point. That says a lot, and we respect you for that. But without getting into the park whole situation, our issue is ongoing in order to keep police and vehicles running and library out. Those are ongoing costs, they're not one-time costs. And so if we're setting aside rhetoric and everything else, if, you know, our charge is seriously deal with the budget, and the budget is, the operating budget are ongoing costs, and so how we make that up, we really have to look at ongoing costs. One-time fixes, they've done them in other cities, and it's a cop-out. I'm not saying that you wouldn't go into reserves in an emergency, but it's cop-out. And this city, and I think what the mayor talked about, we need to just remind ourselves and everybody else, you know, I've been at this a long time. I don't know of another city in the state of California that has run as fiscally responsible, and I challenge anybody to point one out, for a city our size is the city of Thousand Oaks, with the amount of reserves that we have, and we have had difficult times. ERAF, we've had challenges. And our city staff and the city council has been extremely conservative and extremely responsible with the dollars that we have. And at the same time, I think arguably provide top-level city service and top-level city and municipal facilities for our kids and our families, our seniors and everything else. So it is a balancing issue, we recognize that. We also respect that there are neighborhood issues, and they occur, council has to deal with them, parks districts dealing with theirs, and they'll get through it. And so, but we do need to look at ongoing costs as it relates to our operating budget, and we can't do the one-time fix with the Band-Aids. That doesn't do anybody any good. It's very disingenuous, in my view. So thanks for the report. Mr. Ed, I'm just wondering when the riveting part starts.
Soon as the motion and...
I don't know. I feel like I've been riveted to this chair for six hours, I'll tell you that. So anyway, you guys did a nice job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I certainly echo that. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Please vote.
Councilmember Gillette, did you vote? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Redevelopment agency reports, we have none. Committee commission board reports, we have none. Council issues recommendations, we have none. City manager, you have a report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the only thing I'm going to make reference to is the next council meeting, which will be on May 19th. And we have three public hearings, one dealing with the general plan amendments to clean up some open space parcels, including getting Site I appropriately designated. Corrine Hill Court, a single-family home project comes back. And a T-Mobile wireless communications facility at Kimber Drive, that's coming back. And we have some department reports, the funding options review agreement, we made reference to that earlier, the county-city library funding agreement issue, which was made reference to earlier. And that's, those are the main items, and that's it. By the way, city manager, follow-up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before we adjourn, there is a statement card about our adjournment policies. So with that said, tonight we'll adjourn. Our first adjournment is in honor of Jack Broome, a well-known philanthropist who passed away on April 10th at the age of 91 years. Mr. Broome was a significant contributor to numerous worthy causes. He was a major supporter to the only Cal State University in Ventura County in 1999. He pledged $5 million to establish a library at the developing California State University Channel Islands. In recognition of his generosity, the library was named in his honor. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I would like to express our sincere condolences to the Broome family on their loss. Mr. Broome will be long remembered for his great contributions and generosity. Our second adjournment is in honor of Francis Ohr Frank Tonner, a former Thousand Oaks resident and Westlake High School graduate, served as a Navy lieutenant, junior grade, in northern Afghanistan. After serving in Afghanistan only five months, Frank was scheduled to return home on leave when he and another young naval officer were killed. Frank was 26 years old. During his high school years, his outstanding skill on the football field earned him a full scholarship to the Merchant Marine Academy in New York, where he met his wife, Brooke. Frank loved sports. He was a running back for Westlake's championship football team. He was known for his friendly personality and positive attitude. He always had a smile for everyone. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, we send our deepest regrets to Frank's wife, Brooke, and the entire Tonner family. So with that, we adjourned our regular meeting of May 19th.